Good morning, everyone. We are unfortunately two minutes late here. And welcome in this wonderful weather. A little change, variety is always the spice of life here. So it's nice to have a little dampness and wonderful rain unless you live in the northwest in the flooding. And I hope you drive, especially you young people. It's not your driving so much as long as you're not texting as it is everybody else on the road. They have no idea about the grease and the oil, so be very careful. Anyway, the August 1st, 2012 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel 2 and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers and go on out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the northeast, excuse me, the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewison First, and employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available speaker cards which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the city clerk's office or at the rear of our chambers here. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has a need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff, and we are investigating and working on trying to have captions and support for hearing impaired. If you parked in the garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend George Belgium Metropolitan Community Church and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance, please? Good morning.
Let us pray. Thank you for the gift you have given each of us, the gift which is today. Once more inspire us with a vision of the exciting possibilities for ourselves, for our loved ones, and for our community. Once more empower us to realize our dreams. Amidst its busyness, give us the grace to allow ourselves and each other moments to take deep breaths, to be mindful of the beauty and blessings all around us, and to be grateful. And may our gratitude for your great gift be expressed in joy, in compassion, in fairness, in kindness towards one another, in sharing, and in service. This we pray in your many holy names. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. We do nothing without you. That's because I am younger than thee, which is not true. That's... All right, good morning, everyone. This is the ceremonial portion of the agenda. But before we get to any... Oh, how are you? Before we get to any of the items, I wanted to take a moment to express our thoughts and compassion, sympathies, condolences to those involved in the recent horrific shooting in Colorado. And I also want to take the same moment to mention the tragic terrorist attack in Bulgaria. So please, for all those who are no longer in this world, a moment of silence. Our sympathies to all. Thank you very much. I'd like to turn over the microphone now to Councilman Beers, who's going to tell us about our August Citizen of the Month. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to confess that I didn't understand the rules. This is my first time selecting the nominee for Citizen of the Month. And so last month, I read in Science Magazine, a UC Davis study that found that, or rather found evidence that supported their theory they were testing, which was that we consumers driven by MBAs running food companies have said, "We like that tomato. That's the one we buy first." And so they've selected through the process of this market process tomatoes which look beautiful but don't taste as good as they used to. And so it was in that spirit that I got excited about nominating seedsavers.org as Citizen of the Month. This is a group that... Seedsavers, seedsavers.org. This is a farm family in northeast Iowa who devoted their farm to a research center dedicated to preserving, cataloging, and taking care of heirloom varieties of seeds. These are seeds of vegetables and flowers handed down from grandparent to grandchild over generations because they tasted better. And I thought it was pretty cool. I actually am currently growing two varieties of heirloom tomatoes, one eggplant and one pepper in my garden this summer. And so the seedsavers.org runs this exchange where people all around the country can cheaply and easily exchange heirloom seeds. It's pretty cool. Then they told me that the Citizen of the Month has to come from Las Vegas. So I narrowed my scope from the global scope that it was aimed at, and once I had it properly narrowed, it was actually a pretty easy choice. The Tour de Summerlin, maybe you've heard of it, is a huge bicycle race. Over 500 bicyclists participate in this every year. It's held in April. And corporate sponsors are Howard Hughes and Station Casinos. And the race does wind all over the city mayor, but I'm a little sad to report that in order to achieve their 100-mile goal, they occasionally stray over city limits. But they end up on the city's southwest border at Red Rock Station where hundreds of tired bicyclists, I'm told, after a 100-mile day, party like it's 1999 or something like that. The event's certainly good for our local economy, attracts hundreds of riders and probably more than 1,000 people that come with them, and they stay overnight and eat out, and that's a good thing. But the best part is that the Tour de Summerlin picks a charity every year and offers them the following deal. They'll give you tickets at a steep, steep discount if your charity will recruit riders and then get those riders to get pledges to donate money to the charity. Last year, Candlelighters, which I think most of us are familiar with, was the chosen charity, and I think they raised over $75,000 through that project. They seem to have struck up a relationship because Candlelighters is the group again for the next Tour de Summerlin. And here to tell you about that is the Citizen of the Month, Randy McGee, owner of McGee's Ski, Bike, and Board, family owned and operated for 35 years next year. And the... One of the two founders of the Tour de Summerlin. They're not grown yet. So tell us about the tour next year.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Beers for nominating us for this. Tour de Summerlin is an annual ride. This next one will be our 12th year that we've been doing it. It is a charity ride, and Candlelighters is our official charity. They raised actually $82,000 this year off the ride, and we've changed our relationship with them for next year where we hope to double that. They are our main sponsor now. It's not just 100 miles. We have three distances. I think the shortest is 40 miles, and it's all through the Las Vegas Valley on the west side of town. And if you know anyone that are cyclists, or if you're a cyclist, the more people we can get to ride in it, the more money we can raise for the Candlelighters. So, thank you.
And the website if people wanted to check out the race?
The website is turdesumerlin.com.
Turdesumerlin.com. If you'll hold this for the photo op. All right. Thank you very much for everything you do, Randy. Oh, that's right, and the street sign, right here. That will be up in front of City Hall for the next month. Thank you.
Thank you. That's just wonderful. The only thing I can ride is a three-wheeler. I've never been brave enough because I plop over all the time. Anyway, for our final two items, where are you? Councilman Ross is going to recognize a group of unsung heroes and volunteers, young people who are finding ways to help our community through two well-known organizations.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Following city council meeting, there will be a veggie fest at Councilman Beers' house. Please ride your bikes there. We've got some great people with us today, some wonderful people as a matter of fact. And many of you may not realize that in the City of Las Vegas Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Departments, we have a volunteer park ambassador program who help keep our parks safe and clean for everyone. So before I read all this great stuff, I'd like the wonderful park ambassadors to come down here along with Stephanie Richards, the ringleader. Stephanie, come down here first, and then all of you mosey over here. We've got a whole bunch of room down here for all of you. Give them a round of applause for what they do. Are you gonna stay there or you want to walk over here? All of you come on over here. What do you think, folks? We get them all in front and down here with the mayor and the council? I think so. As they're making their way, the volunteers are seniors who help promote upcoming city programs by meeting and greeting park visitors and develop a bond with regular park visitors. They also conduct daily inspections of their park and report damaged equipment, maintenance problems, and other safety concerns to the city of Las Vegas. Some of you come over on this side, too. We've got to balance it out. Don't you guys look great in your T-shirts? Now, these are the real movers and shakers of the city, by the way, so get to know their faces because they're important people to us. This group not only provides the city with valuable services, but also they save us about $50,000 a year to taking care of the things that they do in our parks. The park ambassador volunteers currently meet once per month and service the following parks: Wayne Bunker Park, Doolittle Park, Centennial Hills Park, Floyd Lamb Park, Viper Lacrosse Fields, and Raptor Play Park, Majestic Park, Cimarron Park, Police Memorial Park, and Bob Baskin. What do you do in your spare time? Goodness sakes. Did I miss one?
Yes.
Tell me.
Sunny Springs.
Sunny Springs. Good girl, thank you. Did I miss any others? Bruce Trent, yeah, Bruce Trent Park, too, up there. You guys are awesome. Thanks for keeping me straight. At this time, I want to ask Stephanie Richards from the City of Las Vegas Centennial Hills Community Center, who is the ringleader of this bunch, to say a few words.
First of all, thank you, Mayor and council, for honoring such a dynamic park ambassador program. I've been honored to run this program for 18 years, and before I go on to tell you how fabulous they are, I'd like to thank you guys for all your hard work and dedication. They are by far the best volunteer program the city of Las Vegas has. Not only are they out in our city parks, they're in our centers helping provide volunteer opportunities, and we do a fabulous oncology program for UMC Hospital, and we're doing a back-to-school drive right now. We're always looking for new park ambassadors to be involved in the city, so feel free to give me a call at 229-1707, and I can get you started in volunteering in the park ambassador program and any other volunteer programs the city has. So thank you, guys, for having us. Yes, 50 and younger, 50 and older. They would say... It's 50 and older to be a park ambassador.
Awesome. Thank you, Steb. Give them another round of applause. Each of them gets a certificate of appreciation from the city of Las Vegas. And I know some of you in here are 50 and young, older?
Yeah.
And you want to volunteer. So thank you all once again for being such great ambassadors in the city of Las Vegas. Keep up the good work and go recruit some more. We need some more, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Once again, give them a round of applause. Thank you.
I think, just as you said, this is one of the very most important volunteer groups we have. You've helped us so much, and just we're all so proud of you. It's a very good group.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. All right, thank you all. Thank you, guys. Thank you all so much for coming down here. And again, if you want to volunteer, just contact my office or City Parks, and we'll get you dialed in. Now, most of us are aware of the Girl Scouts of Southern Nevada and the contributions they've made to our community. The Girl Scouts of Southern Nevada serves more than 10,000 girl and adult members throughout Southern Nevada. The Girl Scouts of Southern Nevada is part of a national organization, the Girl Scouts of the USA, which was founded March 12, 1912, in Savannah, Georgia by Juliette Gordon Low. Juliette believed that girls should receive the same opportunity as boys to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. Girl Scouts is the nation's premier leadership organization for girls, providing girls with more ways to learn and lead than any other organization. Some of America's most accomplished women in public service, business, science, education, the arts, and community life are all Girl Scouts. Listen to these numbers. 80% of women businesses, business owners, were Girl Scouts. 69% of female United States senators were Girl Scouts. 67% of female members of the House of Representatives were Girl Scouts. Aren't those amazing numbers? The Girl Scouts envision a world where girls and women are represented equally as leaders of our communities, our businesses, and our nation. In our next 100 years, Girl Scouts is committed to providing girls with the opportunities and skills they need to excel, exceed, and lead. The city of Las Vegas is always supportive of organizations that benefit our community, and the Girl Scouts certainly are a great asset to our citizens. Right now, I'd like to invite Patricia Miller, the Chief Executive Officer of the Girl Scouts of Nevada, to come up here and join me and accept a proclamation from the city of Las Vegas recognizing 100 years of service. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Mayor, City Council. Thank you so very much. We really do appreciate that we've had the opportunity in this community and have been so supported by the city to help us to develop the next set of leaders. I have no doubt that some of the girls that you're going to see today and some of the girls who are in our program will someday be sitting right up there where all of you are. That's our hope and our desire, that they not only develop themselves, as you said, spiritually and mentally, but also as leaders, not only to lead this city, but our county, our community, our state, and our nation. So we are just thrilled that we've been around for 100 years. We know that we're going to be here for another 100 years doing wonderful things in this community, and thanks for your support.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you for all you do for the young ladies in our community. Now, to demonstrate the wonderful work done by the Girl Scouts organization, I would like to introduce to you today three very special young ladies. Natalie Wainscot, Piper Waggoner, and Chacey Dancer. Would you please come up here? They're in uniform. Give them a round of applause. These are great girls. Uh-oh, they have props. Well, you guys look great in your uniforms. It is always a pleasure when I can share with you some of the great things happening in Ward 6. And this morning, I get to share with you... You girls need to stand this way and smile. Yes, ladies, please spin slowly for the cameras. Look at all those patches. My goodness, look at that. Wow, yeah. Well, today I get to share with you a story that demonstrates that we have young people in our community who are wonderful human beings and who care about others and who try to make a difference in the place that we live. Following the tragic death of Alyssa Tremba, a resident of Centennial Hills, these three Girl Scouts from Cadet Troop 417 of Centennial Hills decided to take action to heighten awareness of the victims of violence and also pursue their Girl Scout Silver Award. Natalie, Piper, and Chacey met on Sundays brainstorming on ways they could achieve their goals. They decided to create a website, don'tforgetusgs-webs.com, and a brochure, which they have and will pass out, to raise awareness and help prevent future victims of violence. When are you going to do the prop? Not yet? Okay. Not yet, hang on. The website and the brochure provide resources, tips to stay safe, helpful hotlines, and support group information. Now, I think we've got some pictures to put up on the screen for you right now. Are they up yet? Okay. These admirable young ladies also held a garage sale to raise funds to purchase a memorial plaque to be placed under a tree at Floyd Lamb Park at Tulie Springs in honor of Alyssa Tremba and all of the others who have lost their lives to violence. I attended the dedication ceremony and was very impressed with how well everything was organized and coordinated. The attendees were asked to write messages on rocks, and then they were placed around the plaque. It was a beautiful ceremony held in a beautiful setting. Too often, we only hear of the negative actions of some of our youth. How refreshing it was to be reminded there are lots of great kids in our city, and they deserve to be recognized. Thank you, Natalie, Piper, and Chacey, for your hard work. Now, Chacey, you're kind of the ringleader here. Tell us about it.
It was a pretty long journey to where we got. We had a bunch of prerequisites to work on first, but the awful tragedy that happened in our neighborhood really brought us to our idea for our project. We had a few, like, problems getting approved because we just needed to tweak a little bit, and it was just like a really good team effort between us all.
Awesome. Give them a round of applause. Awesome. Awesome. Now, this is a special occasion for me because I didn't know this was going to happen, but Patricia, have you got something for these young ladies?
We have your Silver Awards for you, so hopefully you will help present. We have the Silver Award pin for each of them. This is the highest award at their age level that they can earn. That would be great if you'd like to. Yeah. And it does require that they have put in hours and hours of work to get to this point. And we're all knowing that these girls are going to go on toward the next, the highest award that a girl can earn in Girl Scouting, which will be the Gold Award. So we hope to see you back to be doing that. We also have their certificates. That's Chacey's. I believe that's Natalie's. And Piper's.
Band-aids?
I just... Well, we have a few moments here. I was a Girl Scout, and it meant so much to me that I still have that Girl Scout uniform with a few badges, not quite as many as they have over there. And I kept it, I saved it because Girl Scouts meant a lot to me, and I have such high respect for them. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you again.
Give them another round of applause. Did you want to show something here? Did you bring something?
It's just pictures of us and our team, and then our journey to get there. We started with our soaring-to-silver training, so we knew what to do with all of it. And then the Amaze Journey, which is just like an inner thought kind of project. And then we chose our team, and we brainstormed our idea. And then we got the approval and everything, and we had to go take an interview with the council, which was really scary. And then we did the garage sale, and then we planned the dedication ceremony at Floyd Lamb Park, and it went off and out of the hitch.
And you've got some of these brochures, right? So you're going to hand some of these out. Anybody wants one of these brochures? The girls worked very hard on this project. I'm very proud of them. It's good to know we have awesome young people in this community that are coming up behind us. So thank you, Patricia Miller. Thank you, ladies. Once again, give them a great big round of applause. Moms and dads, thank you, too, for supporting your girls. All right, now get... Wow, we're in good shape, aren't we? We're in great shape. We've got the park ambassadors, the Girl Scouts, and now, today, we are also celebrating a huge milestone for the Boy Scouts of America. The Boy Scouts of America are also celebrating their 100th anniversary for the rank of Eagle Scout. And I'm not going to do this by myself, so I'm going to ask Andrew Moffett. Andrew, come on up here. Paul Moffett, his father, Ryan Moon, Jim Schmidt, Philip E. Born from the Las Vegas Area Council District. Come on down here, guys. I'm not going to do this by myself. Give them a round of applause. Andrew, right here, buddy. Do you remember? No, go away. You're decorated. They're just old guys, okay? Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scout program, and Andrew just finished his Eagle. Is that right? Good job. Congratulations. In August of 1912, the first Eagle Scout medal was given to Arthur Rose Eldred. In August of 1912, I'm sorry, since that time, over 2 million scouts have earned the rank in the United States. Last year alone, 466 young men from this Las Vegas community earned the rank of Eagle Scout and completed a total, and this is astonishing, almost 67,000 service hours dedicated to service projects here in the city of Las Vegas, supporting our community. Give them a great big round of applause for that accomplishment. Now, the old guys are standing up here with me. I'm sorry, guys, I know I'll pay for that later. Once a scout has earned his Eagle Scout rank, he will keep that title for life. Once an eagle, always an eagle, and all of these men here today are Eagle Scouts. There are several requirements to earn the rank of Eagle Scout. A scout must serve in a leadership position for six months. He must earn a minimum of 21 merit badges: first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communications, personal fitness, environmental science, personal management, camping, family life, emergency preparedness, lifesaving, swimming, hiking, and cycling. You guys are tough. You guys are tough guys. He must develop, plan, and lead a service project that will benefit the community, much like these young ladies did to earn their award. They must take part in a Scoutmaster Conference and successfully complete an Eagle Scout Board of Review. Andrew, was that tough?
Yeah, it was really tough.
Was that tough? Okay. My family and I have been involved with the Boy Scouts of America since I was eight years old. It is my honor and my privilege to recognize the Boy Scouts of America in celebrating the 100th anniversary of Eagle Scout. And with that, Andrew, I want you to say a few words before I hand the microphone over to your dad. Tell us about your journey to become an Eagle Scout.
I had to plan and do a service project, and I gathered 50 white shirts for the LDS missionaries in Honduras, and I collected socks, belts, and so it was a long journey. Took about two and a half years, so...
You're not done yet. What have you learned so far on your journey to become an Eagle Scout? Have you learned anything that you can use in life?
I've learned hard work, and I've learned dedication.
Can you sew a button on your shirt? Mom, did you teach him that? All right, well, thank you, Andrew. Paul, I would like you to receive the proclamation recognizing the Eagle Scout, making this Eagle Scout Day in the city of Las Vegas, and I'd like you to say a few words about the program as well.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. It's a pleasure to be...
of the United States, and employees, wonderful people who work hard and give their best effort every single day. So, the Boy Scouts of America has affected many people. I, at age 13, worked on my Eagle Scout project, and I earned the first aid merit badge, and I had to go to a fire station at age 13 and sit with a bunch of firemen and be taught the principles of saving a boy's life, and saving anybody's life. And so, it's a wonderful character development program, and yes, it is hard work, and we want our young men to do hard things. So, it's a wonderful honor to receive this award, 100 years, and we hope for another 200 years with the Eagle Scout program because it does so many great things. And we hope that Andrew, here to the left, also becomes very successful and is willing to help everybody who's around him on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Andrew, turn around and show the mayor and the council members all your merit badges. Look at those merit badges. Paul Moffett and I both serve on the Las Vegas Area Council Board of Directors, and we've got great staff at the Las Vegas Area Council. We push hard, not only for the young women in our community to be successful, but also for the young men in our community to be successful. So, it's an honor and privilege to serve with all of you. Another great big round of applause, thank you very much, everybody. Now, what's this?
Uncle Sam. The Boy Scouts of America are taught to say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you."
Well, thank you.
So, we have something for you. It's a hand carved bolo tie that will remind you that Uncle Sam is who you need to follow.
Wow, look at that.
And we have one for the mayor.
Oh wow, how about that?
Steve, the one that you have here is a very old man that closely resembles you. Yeah, you call us old, we're to the right of you, we're half your age. But we want to say thank you. That's a hand carved bolo tie, it's numbered on the back, and it's an Uncle Sam. We looked for a Mrs. Sam, but we couldn't find one.
I'm going to share it with every member of council because I know that I'm looking in their eyes at the jealousy. I will share it, I will share it, I promise you. But thank you, we're very honored. I knew that, that's why I said I'm sharing mine. Thank you. Congratulations.
Councilman Ross, just to let you know, to follow up on what Councilman Beers talked about gardening, there's a gardening merit badge. And Andrew and his two older brothers have been working at the Provident Community Garden, and the mayor, behind you, has a grow box at the garden, and we plant heirloom seeds. And on Monday, we finished another 20 boxes, and so there's now 135 boxes with another 60 planned in the next 30 days. And anybody...
And how do they do it?
Yeah, if you go to PCGarden.org, you can register for a box, and it's $125, a one-time fee, and then you have a very, it used to be inexpensive water bill, it's now expensive.
That's you in a county island.
Yeah. But $10 a month, and people are growing corn, squash, tomatoes, carrots, beets, you can grow anything you want as long as it's legal. If it's illegal, we have master gardeners that will notify you and the authorities. But you can grow anything year-round in this valley, you can grow over 200 different things in this valley. And we have many religious organizations, communities, organizations, so many people involved with gardening, and it's a wonderful, wonderful community place for many people in the community to gather. So, we say thank you to the mayor and the other council members for your great support with that garden also.
And our trees are healthy. You made those magnificent trees around that fence.
Yeah, we planted around 25 different Sumac trees, and also, along there, we have 14 fruit trees that have been planted, and another 14 fruit trees that will be going in. And on Saturday, the Las Vegas Southwest Rotary came, and they helped us plant 800 corn seeds. So, the New Jersey Got to Have It White Corn will be up in about 72 days, and so, we invite Councilman Beers back to see the corn, and we will come back here and deliver some corn to each of you. But we're very excited, so we have the corn, we have squash. We harvested about 85 pumpkins on Saturday, but we put them in dry storage, and then we're going to have a pumpkin carving contest, and so it's a wonderful place for people in the community to gather. So, and the mayor and her wonderful husband have box number 59? The year you were married?
62.
62. Box 62, and it has their name on the outside of the box, it's 10 by 4 boxes, and so, we invite all to come, and it's a great place to gather. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. Again, give them a round of applause for the great accomplishment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. What a great morning, and congratulations, all of you and scouts, for the 100 years is simply fabulous. And stay out of box 62. There is no way you go pick anything, but I will give Councilman Beers one of our tomatoes for cross-pollination. So, anyway, we will take a five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene. Thank you all, thanks.
Laura Kaufman.
Laura Kaufman.
Can you come up? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're back in action here. And we are on Agenda Item Eight. Public comment during this portion of the Agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker may be allowed is going to be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. And if anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the Agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. Wait, microphone on, please.
It's on. Good morning, Your Honor, fellow counsel staff. I'm Alan Karcher. I'm going to speak in behalf of being a native born Las Vegas and a past president independent insurance agents. We do know that outsourcing is a big agenda for the presidential election. Republicans pointed Democrats for outsourcing. And vice versa points on the other ones are outsourcing. Well, on Item Thirty and Thirty-One last time, I didn't have a chance to speak. That's outsourcing. And I wish that you all would consider keeping your professional services to the residents of the city of Las Vegas and the state of Nevada instead of outsourcing to Chicago and LA. Twenty-nine had no problems with that. Tana Prince lives here, supports the family here. That's good. No problem. Thirty, Thirty-One was my problem because I think you could keep that here in the state of Nevada and in Las Vegas and support the community here. And also, Las Vegas International Airport has a great ring to it. And viva Las Vegas. Thank you very much and have a great day.
And Mr. Karcher.
Yes.
Thank you for your many years of super service, not only to the community as a whole, but specifically to our Audit Committee. I understand that you have chosen not to seek reappointment, but we want to thank you. You've done a great job. You're a great friend to the city and the community of Nevada and Las Vegas. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Lost my hair on that one.
No, no, no. The style is bald. The rest of it needs to come off. Please.
Good morning, Mayor and counsel. I just want to, uh, my name is Tomaholdip. I'm sorry. I took my hat off for you also.
And thank you. Very handsome man without your hat.
Thank you. With that being said, as the gentleman said, this is election year. And I think I'm coming with more of a questioning of how our city is being ran at this time. And just asking, especially for Mayor and counsel, isn't it very important that the city feels comfortable with law enforcement along with the people that are representing them? Wouldn't you, wouldn't you say so? Well, and wouldn't you also say that it's very important that, that the citizens of Las Vegas will feel comfortable enough to know that if they have issues that go past maybe just business, uh, business understanding that they can come to you and know that something might be done to whatever that may be? And with that being said, aren't, aren't the representation of this city, aren't you guys elected in by the people or are you guys elected in by yourselves?
Every ward, the representatives, counsel are elected by their ward constituency. And I am elected at large.
Oh, okay. So I'm saying that, so are the people, do the people have any voting? I'm saying the city, from the city of Las Vegas, as far as we are concerned, people who are eighteen years old or older, do they have an opportunity to vote in for the people who's going to represent their ward along with being their mayors and council? That's what, that's the question I'm asking. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have Les Pieris, or Pieris Stran, I can't quite read it, Streeter.
Mayor, good morning. Members of City Council, my name is Lee Pierre Streeter. I have a written presentation I'd like to submit to each of you. Due to the fact that I had a stroke about a year ago and I'm having a little difficulty in talking, I made that, but I do want to play this.
We can hear the dog. You have a minute unless this is, okay.
That's what I'm going to say. Basically, I have an hour and forty-five minutes worth of a dog barking noise. I've been dealing with this issue for the past two to three months. I've tried contacting several occasions to animal control with no avail. I've just recently got a letter saying they were going to send it to mediation with the, Neighborhood Justice Center, okay? As you can see, I have a letter that I've submitted to you for, you know, hopefully some action. I've submitted a letter previously to the mayor as well as to my city councilwoman, Lois Tarkanian, and I haven't got a response from neither one of you. So I'm really kind of perturbed by the fact that, okay, I'm trying to deal with an issue that's bothering me on a daily basis and I can get no respect, no response from my elected officials about this issue, trying to resolve it. I've been patient and I still have no resolution. So I'm here today pleading that someone take care of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I just might, sir, sir, if I just might say to you, I have had a member of my staff, my secretary.
Me.
I know, I know. We are very far behind in our contacts in Ward One because of some personal difficulties within staff. But what I want to say to you is this, that does not mean we haven't been working on this. I just had a meeting yesterday about this and we discussed with, planning how we might be able to help do this better. And I want you to know that today I have notes in my blue notebook here to bring before this committee to find ways that we can help you better. We did try to help you. We didn't contact you, and that's because of the lack of our, our secretary being there. But in what we have done is we have contacted legal, we have contacted animal control. The problem is, we don't have tough enough ordinances in a manner that we can follow through and get these individuals to do something other than to go to mediation, which oftentimes in these situations does not turn out to be a win-win situation. So I want you to know, we are doing that. Today, I'm going to be mentioning something pertaining to rewriting some of the ordinances. And I hope that we'll do a better job for you. And I apologize, we didn't get back to you, but...
And I do want to mention, I've just asked the member of my office who does a great deal of our constituents' response to take a review. And Ms. Kaufman, if you would get that from our marshal and advise, and we will be back in touch with you. Thank you.
My only question is the fact that every day I'm being inundated by this dog noise. And that's what I want to get stopped.
Thank you.
Either collar or removal of the animal, one or the other.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just mayor and I'm down you by popular demand. I'm not playing, y'all know for real. And so, and I was told to come down and kind of chew y'all out a little bit, but I don't really want to do that. But the objective is, but one councilman I would like to chew out, and that's when y'all get to talking to each other. And that's Councilman Anthony Starborough. Oh, I'd like to get their attention.
I'm so very sorry.
I'd like to get your attention to, Councilman Starborough, I need your attention, sir. Councilman? Oh, okay. Years ago, you know, when you first got elected and whatever, and you're the mayor of Henderson, he got forty-five votes and you go in your seat by eleven. We said, that's, yours is one less than a dozen. The idea is, when you get such a low count in your vote, that means you barely got yourself in the office. And I'm on the chest high and you back because, see, one day, not somewhat back, you, you came into me and you said something to me. You see, I'm who I am and my personality disposition and whatever is me. I wouldn't try to change you or anybody else. I know by you being a police officer, you have certain built-in situations that you want to deal with. But, but what I'm really trying to say, sir, you have no right trying to tell me how to organize, how I speak, walk, talk, or anything else. So one day you kind of got on me and I'm who I am. That's, I can't change that. I don't want to. And hundreds of millions of people around the world is in favor of it. And the objective is, sir, I'm in the history big time and I really don't need your permission, but I can jump on you. You got elected by eleven votes. That's eleven. That ain't many people, sir. You just barely got your seat. And when they made you the mayor pro tem, that really sent me off the edge. I don't know what's going on with the man, your husband or your, but he shouldn't be the mayor pro tem. Next year, you're up for election and whoever ran again, I hope to run again, and I hope they actually just actually beat you. Because you didn't want to see the hall, remember?
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I got to say. They told me to come down.
He's doing a great job for us, let me tell you. Thank you. Oh, great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on now to Item Number Nine. It's a business item. For possible action, any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wished to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance for a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number Forty-two, Review of Conditions on a Reflexology Establishment License. Liming Jing DBA Superior Reflexology Two-Two, Two-One Paradise Road. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till August fifteenth. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Councilman. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Moving on to Item Number Ten. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the regular City Council Meeting of July eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item Number Eleven. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Annual Review of Our City Manager Elizabeth N. Fretwell. Ms. Fretwell.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to highlight a few of our key successes in our organization that we've achieved over the last twelve months. We do so many great things. It's hard to try and keep it in a very concise format, but I'm going to do my very best. And as I was preparing for this review, I took the opportunity to look back at the survey that recently was covered in some of the news media that the Downtown Alliance conducted. And when you look at that, you see some really significant changes in the perception of our downtown. You have a lot of people who've heard a lot about downtown. They've heard a lot of positive things about downtown. They're visiting downtown, not just once, but multiple times. You look at our occupancies, they're up. You look at new business starts, those are up. Good things are happening. That's a real testament to your leadership, the efforts and activities of our staff. And I, I'd like to really focus in on some of those other key things that I think have created that. It brings to mind for me the value of the strategic plan. Every few years, you all go away, literally off-site, and you talk about where you want to take the city. And your staff takes that very seriously. And I think when you look at the results of our prior strategic plan, there's some really key things that have happened in the downtown areas as a result of that. One, we saw the Smith Center open. We saw the move to City Hall. We saw the completion of the Zappos transaction. We saw the startup of the Downtown Project. The explosion that's happening on East Fremont Street. The beginning of what we hope to be an explosion in the Arts District. And everywhere in between. That's the value of that kind of focus. That's the value of having that kind of plan in place where there's consistent direction. And that really comes back down to you, you all being willing to tell us what you feel is most important and then giving us the opportunity to go make it happen. Go get it done for you. I think that's really critical. And, and we went back and we re, we re-upped our strategic plan. You all approved a new strategic plan this year to help us focus in those key priorities that you felt were critical. And I think you felt comfortable doing that because we are a can-do city. The things that we put down before, we've been making significant accomplishments and I'm very proud of that. All of those efforts culminate in a community pride. That is not something you build overnight. Community confidence is not built overnight. It takes a long time to move the needle on that. But we are moving the needle and, and I'm very proud of that. And as I've expressed to each of you personally, although downtown's not the only thing we do, we know that it's a critical component of our business community. It is our business center for the city of Las Vegas and it's vital that we keep that momentum going strong. We've become more sustainable fiscally. We've been working really hard at it over the last three or four years to weather this recession. Maybe I shouldn't use the word weather because I feel like what we've done is we have pushed our way through that recession and we are coming out on the other side. And let me give you an example. One of the goals that we focused in on is comprehensive fiscal stewardship in your strategic plan. Last year, we, we approved a budget that anticipated a four million dollar shortfall, a one percent shortfall, one percent deficit. We, through the efforts of all of our city employees, all of them, every single one of them, we were able to turn that deficit into a sixteen million dollar surplus. What were we able to do as a result of that? We were able to stabilize our employee benefits fund. That is a big deal versus having to cut benefits on top of compensation. And it's all because our employees did all of that work. Cost containment. We didn't have to lay off people to get that result. We didn't have to do anything further. We just needed to mind our Ps and Qs, watch those pennies. We also continued to modify our compensation and benefits program. We continued to reduce our energy costs. We cut our energy costs by another twelve percent last year in, in our pursuit to be a net zero energy consumption city. That is a big deal. That's over a million dollars in savings a year, a million two, actually, because we've been converting to solar, been converting our lights to LEDs. Our public works department is out there doing incredible work to try and make that happen, as well as our field ops department, our operations and maintenance department. And this isn't going unnoticed. We were recognized as finalists for the Cashman Good Government Award last year. We were recognized by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce as a finalist in sustainability awards. These are big deals. State and national recognition on our fiscal sustainability program. Add to that that now fifty percent of all of our city services are available online. That's a significant adjustment. People don't have to come see us to get their work done at the city. We're making it easier for them to interact with us, and I'm really proud of that. We streamline our business licensing and development services efforts. Just to put that in perspective, we reduced more than forty percent of our general business licensing licenses. Twenty-two thousand of them are gone. In May, we saw our highest month ever in new licensing volume. So we're doing the right things. Our building department reviews are down to eight days or less for both commercial and residential. Significant progress in making sure that we are a business-friendly environment in the city of Las Vegas. We will continue to focus in on those turnaround times. We're not done. Actually, I don't think that road ever runs out. But we have made significant strides to make our processes more customer-friendly and consistent. And just a little side note, I found out the other day that our business licensing process for all licenses, not just general licenses, are averaging less than thirty days, which is a significant improvement in our, in our business licensing process. One of the other things that we focused in on is trying to get this economy jump started. That was a big goal for, for me last year. And we were very instrumental in retooling our regional economic approach to help be successful in the eyes of the state and the bill that the governor was a proponent of as well as our Assembly and Senate leadership last year. We've been helpful in helping NDA get reorganized to take them to a next level, to become that regional economic leader. regional economic leader that we need them to be. What happened as a byproduct of that is that we were unable to complete our local economic development strategy. But as you'll see later on in your agenda today, we have a contract on for you to select a consultant that will not only be developing our local economic strategy plan, but the regional one as well. So we'll be in lockstep with the state and the region as we move forward in creating a strong economy here, really building a business climate where people want to do business, where they need to be in Southern Nevada, where they need to be in the city of Las Vegas, because we're doing the very best, and we've created that climate where they want their businesses to be, to grow, and to stay. We've also invested heavily in our neighborhoods. This morning, you'll hear a report from Jorge and Larry. They're going to outline some of the progress we've made in our capital improvement program over the course of the year, but I want to hit on a few of those things. One, we rehabilitated over sixteen miles of streets this year. We've added streetlights and converted streetlights to LEDs. We've improved median landscapes on Rampart, Charleston, Eastern, Upland, and Cheyenne, just to name a few. We've improved our flood control at Floyd Lamb. I was talking to somebody who lived out there the other day. They're like, "Hallelujah, it rained and it didn't flood." Twenty-six million dollars' worth of improvements at Floyd Lamb. This year, I'm hoping that we will be able to focus in on some small, targeted neighborhood revitalization programs based on the areas that are most at risk as identified in our neighborhood indicators program. And I think we'll be able to see some real turnaround in some of those neighborhoods with that concerted effort. As you know, we invest very heavily in public safety. It's a key priority for this council. We all know that. Public safety is job one, really, for local governments to make sure we're living up to that expectation. So we did some key things there. We adopted a new residential sprinkler ordinance in concert with the building industry. They were actually happy with it. It wasn't an imposed regulation, it was one that was worked on jointly. We entered into joint service agreements in public safety with North Las Vegas that helped us and them. Our fire department was reaccredited. That is no easy feat in a time where we've been having to make rescissions to everyone's budgets over the last several years. We opened two new fire stations in the last few months. We hired a new court administrator. We successfully reorganized our parking enforcement efforts and planning efforts. As late as last week, you saw our firefighters on the side of a Las Vegas resort down on the famed Las Vegas Strip, rescuing individuals who were stranded on the outside of that building. We have an incredible team that, from day to day, are making it better and safer for our citizens, and it's because we invest wisely there, we seek to be the best, and improve our efficiencies with limited resources. And we'll keep doing that. None of these accomplishments are possible without creative, innovative, committed employees. We just wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be here to be able to say all this stuff, to share some of these accomplishments with each of you and our community today, without visionary leaders like our executive team, Mark, Scott, Orlando, Karen, Maggie, Ted, all the directors that just do such an incredible job. They are so dedicated and so effective at what they do. I can't speak highly enough about them all. And without leaders like you, it's not easy sometimes to sit at that dais and say, "This is what we really want to have happen, team. We really want to see these things get accomplished and give that kind of clarity that we need to go out there and get it done for you." But you do that. You give us clear marching orders, and you let us take some risks along the way, and you don't whack us for maybe making a mistake every once in a while in our effort to be the best, to continuous improvement. I thank you for that. And we know that the reason why you let us do that, and the reason why you provide that kind of direction, is because you want to build the best community we can have, and to have the best-run organization we can possibly have serving that community. I know that's what that's about, and I thank you for that leadership. As you consider all these accomplishments this morning, I'd just like to point out that in your new strategic plan, we added a new area, a new focus priority area called organizational excellence. And that's something that Orlando and I are going to be working on quite a bit over the course of the next year. And I think it's important that you understand why I think that's a critical piece of the puzzle. We've been in a great deal of uncertainty for a long time, and I believe that it's time for us really to get back to a new sense of normal. We're never going to control a national economy. We're not going to control the state. We may be able to influence Metro's deficit, but it's certainly not within our control. And I recognize those are all things that impact us. But at the end of the day, we need to get a handle on our own new sense of normal. What that means to me is really trying to get back to restoring hours of service, trying to figure out a financial way to be able to restore those service levels that our citizens have come to expect, that we implement our gain-sharing program, and that we recognize the hard work of our team more fully than we've been able to for the last two or three years. I think it's going to be a lot of hard work, but I also think it's something we can accomplish. We are developing a value-driven culture here in the city of Las Vegas. It's one focused on achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now, now. And if we're going to make that happen, we have to live those values. I have great confidence in our leadership, our employees, and our community to achieve these things, to live our values and achieve our strategic goals, to build a better community as a result. Mayor and council, I am honored to be entrusted to be the city manager, to be able to do these great works and help create a culture that allows them to happen. I thank you for the opportunity to perform in this role, and I look forward to great things over the coming year. I look forward to working with you to make sure that these goals are accomplished. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I think what we should do up here first is, are there specific questions before we have Seeing no nod to that, thank you, Ms. Fretwell. And you know me being a bit of a renegade after fifty years with Oscar. I don't normally follow the pathway I'm supposed to, but today, for sure, I'm going to. This is going to be done by seniority, and not seniority of age. It's going to be seniority of service. So I now ask for my lovely partner on my left, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I wanted to say, Betsy, that as the person right now who has the highest number of years in seniority, I've had the privilege of watching you move and grow professionally. And it's been wonderful for me to see. It's been a fulfilling type of experience for me and for all of us up here. It's not easy to handle the diversity of philosophies of seven different people that are up here, and of all the different types of communities that we have, and you've done a wonderful job in that. I'd just like to say to everyone that Betsy's the best. She has done the best we possibly could have had during this time of economic downfall and this time of great need. Extremely knowledgeable in the management areas, very professional, she sets positive goals, and she works hard to achieve them. Each goal that she mentioned that she had met, she did it, and she did it in a good way. And when we needed to make tweaks, she made tweaks. And if we felt we disagreed with her, she very nicely and professionally listened to us and tried to help wherever she could. She's tough. She shows courage. Courage is a really hard commodity to find now, and it's wonderful when we have someone here. And when she said that she also feels the thanks for her staff, I agree. You've helped manage, you've helped pull together a very, very strong staff, which also shows professionalism and courage and knowledge of the fields. You see the big picture. You have great vision. My goodness, how we got through this financial situation, as well as we did better than any other government entity in the Valley. The downtown area has continued to grow and be a big spark for all of us. The efficiency of how we handle problems, which praise comes to me every day from people in construction and people in their homes. You're willing to tweak when tweaking is necessary. You help keep us aware of new trends through your memos, through the sharing of professional books, which I always enjoy reading when you pass them on, and from your face-to-face meetings with us. And also, Betsy, you show a concern for the needs of the professional staff here. And when there are problems, or things happen in a family way that are hard on an individual working here, I've seen you personally take time and put the effort into addressing that. That's a sort of a win-win balance, when you have all that knowledgeability of management, and you also have the human heart to help others, too. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's been a great learning experience for me, watching you as you've developed things here, and I think I speak for all of us in saying you've done a magnificent job.
I think next is Councilman...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ross, I think you're next in line for seniority.
Thank you, Mayor. Betsy, you were deputy city manager when I was elected several years ago under Doug Selby, and I must say this. I'm going to say a few things, actually, because I'm passionate about what you do and what you've done for the city of Las Vegas. And I've read all this, and I know you just did it all again, but I've been able to watch it, too. You helped me, when I was first elected, become a better city councilman, serve the public better, with the public's interests at heart. But you've also listened, certainly to me as one council member, for the past several years in regards to my vision for the city, business-friendly, making it easier for the businesses, making it easier for our families, the investments we have in our neighborhoods, the investment as a city we have in our people, and it's probably the most important thing. When I say "our people," I mean the residents, and I mean our employees. You're a successful manager, and this is what really bothers me. You are the city manager of the largest city in the state of Nevada. The revenue that we generate for the entire state is tremendous. And what bothers me is, as I look at other cities and city managers and county managers and managers of other government agencies that are compensated, it bothers me that you're not there with them. And I've taken this personally, Mayor, and I don't know how to control my thoughts so much on this, but it's wrong. You do an incredible job. You've got the A-team, and I'm a little selfish. We have got the best team, and I have great respect for the other municipalities throughout the state. I have great respect for their leadership, for their managers, for their mayors, and their council members. But this is the team. None of you are leaving. I will hunt you down. But I think it's significant for you, because you've created that team, and they're receptive to our concerns and our priorities. And what's interesting is, we as a council, our priorities are about this city. They're not about ourselves. And we focus on that, and we work hard doing it. I want to thank you. I want to thank this team and all of the other department heads, directors, deputy directors, and everybody else, all the way down to Parks and Rec and whoever's mulling that lawn out there, because that's what makes our city great. And yes, I can brag about us as council members all day long, but I want to brag about you and your leadership skills and ability getting us to where we need to be in the years to come, especially coming out of this recession. And you were hired on in the middle of the recession, and now we're coming out of this recession. But it's our vision and your vision and your team's shared vision on what's going to make this city a better place to live for the years to come. Thank you for staying with us as long as you have. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, for those of you, and not to take away for this very special moment, how many of you think I made a mistake in seniority? Please raise your hand. Well, I did. Number two, I believe, is Councilman Barlow. Wrong or right?
Wrong.
Okay, we're still right. We're having a discussion. This is a true council that doesn't know sometimes what it's doing. So I stay with you, and now we go to my mayor pro tem. No, now we go to Councilman Barlow. Councilman Coffin, you and I have, we are not at the end. So Councilman Barlow, please.
It seems kind of odd, very odd, Mayor, because although I have only been on the council since 2007, I've been working with the council since 1999. And so I have seniority in years at the city, but not necessarily seniority on the council. So I appreciate that. And I've had the opportunity of knowing Betsy. Man, I think the first time I met you, I want to say you were at the county prior to coming to the city. And you've always been professional, I mean, hands-down. And no matter where I travel around the city, and even outside of the city, people know who you are. You have a great reputation for your professionalism, and I think that speaks volumes as to the type of individual that you are. And everyone in the private sector, as well as the public sector, have stated how wonderful you are in passing and in conversations that I've had with them. And I can say that and contest to that, that I've seen how, in fact, you operate. Although there are a number of individuals who disagree with some of the policies that are enacted, they respectfully disagree. But one thing that they all basically have in common is the fact that you know exactly what you're doing. You have clear vision as far as taking all of our brain trust, if you will, and formulating that into a clear and direct path as to how, in fact, we move this city forward, and how, in fact, we make this city a greater place for not only the residents, but for the business community and for visitors alike to really make this place a very entertaining and attractive place to not only live, work, and play. And I believe that was coined by former Mayor Oscar Goodman, and I believe that to this day, as we move forward, you know, being able to take the current mayor, Carolyn Goodman's vision, as well as the vision of this council, and really push that out into the community to let the community know what it is that we're trying to do and keep everything that we are doing transparent, whether it be for the sake of the media, for the sake of PR, and for the sake of the integrity and the fabric of the great city of Las Vegas seal. And for that, I am very appreciative to have known you prior to you becoming city manager, and of course, working with you now as a city manager, being able to come with you, come to you with many ideas and suggestions, and you basically take them into consideration. Not necessarily being able to grow every seed that's thrown at you, but being able to at least follow back up and say that, hey, although we were unable to get this done, I haven't forgotten about it. It's just not time or ripe yet to basically move that agenda forward, and I can appreciate that. The team, and I shared this with you last week, the team that you assembled, I didn't quite understand it, but I was basically paying very close attention to it over the years, as far as the team that you were looking to assemble, as far as your super chiefs, if I said that right? Is that right, the super chiefs? And all of the directors in which you've put in place to oversee the departments in the city of Las Vegas. The executive staff that you've assembled is absolutely great. I mean, they are all professionals. They all know exactly what they're doing, from the super chiefs to the deputy city managers and all of the director's head, director heads, director of each department, and their managers and supervisors. I mean, I can look clearly through each and every department and actually see a job that's getting done on behalf of the city of Las Vegas and the community as a whole. And I think that it starts with the top, meaning you, and you being able to really play quarterback, and each one of your team members playing their position and playing their position well in each, in every one of their departments. And so my hat is off to the entire management supervisors in each and every city department and each and every city employee for making sure that they hear very clearly from you as relates to what we want our city to be and how great we want it to be at the same time. Now, of course, things get tough, specifically when it comes to the collective bargaining units and those conversations, but that's a part of government. units and those conversations, but that's a part of government. That's a part of the transparency. That's a part of the open government and being able to articulate the position as to what our needs are as a council and also making sure that we take care of the city employees who are, in fact, enacting and going out and getting the job done on our behalf. And so, those discussions are great as well, because it only basically sends a clear message that we are all working collectively for the common good of the community as a whole. And we want to make sure that our employees who are out on the street, where the rubber meets the road, if you will, are being able to still go out and do a great job and represent the city on their personal time as well as their city time and making sure that they're carrying out the objectives. And as far as I'm concerned, Betsy, you have been doing a great job, and I know you will continue to do a great job. I am in agreeance with my colleague, Councilman Ross, as far as the questions that I asked when I met with Dan Tarwater as far as some of the specific questions as it relates to all of the directors and managers, to include yourself, as far as making sure that everyone is equitably positioned in their titles and roles. I believe that we, at some point, as a council, have to make a hard-line decision as to how, in fact, we are going to place you in your appropriate category to reflect the public as well as the private sector. I'll just use the term equitable positioning for now. And I believe that's a conversation that we need to bring forward to make sure that we have an opportunity going forward that you're comfortable with and that aligns with the public in the private sector, because I believe we have the greatest city manager in the state of Nevada. And I know that you have an opportunity and a great future ahead of you to do whatever it is that you want to do moving forward. But I believe while we have you, we need to make sure that we take care of you appropriately so that we can keep you as long as we can, because individuals such as yourself don't come too often. In many cities and elected officials that I spoke to across the country specifically, having dealt with National League of Cities for the number of years that I've been a part of that great organization, a lot of them are not having a good time with their city manager. And they ask me all the time, well, how's your city manager? And I said, well, she's not doing a good job. And I tell them that deliberately because I don't want them looking at you. And so, you know, and I know this is, you know, this is televised, but I do. I do. I say, she's not doing a good job, because I don't want them looking in Las Vegas to, you know, give you too many kudos and then folks start to come and cherry pick. And so, as long as we have you, I want to make sure that we can keep you as long as we can to really make this city a great place for us all to enjoy moving forward and for future generations. So, keep up the good work, and I will get off my soapbox and say thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Wow, that just cut all those outside opportunities right off at the knees, didn't it? We are gonna skip Councilman Anthony, who is next senior, and we are going to go to the gentleman who was elected the same year I was, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, and it was a great class, Your Honor. Betsy, when did you first lobby at Carson City?
The first session, I think, was '93.
Ninety-three.
Might have been '95. I can't remember.
I've known you a long time.
It's a long time ago.
I've known you a long time. You know, ladies and gentlemen and members of the council, I tell you, that is the refiner's fire, truly. If you can survive the test of the heat of the legislature with 63 members, all with their own agendas and the partisan agendas and the jealousies between not only the parties but the two houses, if you can balance all of that and come out of there with your reputation intact, as Betsy Fretwell has, I think it speaks well and tells you why she was on the management track a long time ago. It probably wasn't evident to a lot of people who knew Betsy that her star was going to rise, but that's how it rises. That's how it starts. And, you know, only these tests in your youth can make...can tell you for sure if you have what it takes to succeed at the top. And it appears that you've passed the tests, all the tests on the way, and you have the scars to show for it. And now you're city manager of a wonderful city, which, you know, has a lot of problems, and yet we feel like we're moving forward. You know, I mean, if you looked at the numbers of the entire city, you'd say, what does he have to be proud about? But in fact, we are very proud about what we're doing here in the city, and I think that's important, because it isn't gonna be easy. If it was...it wasn't easy the last four years, it's not gonna be easy the next four, because the public might think we're coming out of a recession, and in some ways we are. But in fact, the method by which we pay for government, much of it through property tax, is not coming back at all for the next four years, and maybe it will take 10 years. So, it means that you're facing another test, and I think you'll pass that test. I believe that I can echo the comments that were laudatory by my colleagues. And I'm so impressed with the job you're doing. I've only been here one year, and yet I'm fortunate to have known you for nearly 20. So, I've seen you grow, and I know that I hope that you will continue to hold this position. I'm not proud of the fact that we are not paying you as much as you're worth, actually. When you look at the comparable salaries around the state of Nevada and in the West, our city manager is not paid enough for the job and responsibilities, and I think that's important. There are people who hate government, think all people in government should pay...be paid nothing, and I'm not one of those, because you get what you pay for. You truly do. And as my colleague here, Councilman Barlow, was joking about how we don't want you to be known, I guess, so that's how we do it. We tell people, you're not doing a very good job. But in fact, everybody knows he's lying. So, I will speak the truth on behalf of Councilman Barlow, that we think you're wonderful, and you have my wholehearted endorsement for continuing in this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. And now, we're...I'm gonna be skipped for our baby of the council, Councilman Beers.
I think I'm in ninth in seniority. I think...I can't add very much that these folks haven't added Betsy, other than I am continued to be amazed by how you do what you do with seven bosses that have 14 different opinions. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beers. You're always right on and brief, and it's wonderful, and I'm gonna try and follow your lead before I turn this over to our mayor pro tem. I think I first met you in '99 when Oscar took office, and I felt very sorry for you. You were not city manager at the time, but regardless, I felt very sorry for you having to work with him, although you had a great city council at that time. But I think your leadership, stewardship, your guidance has been remarkable. In fact, it's been unwavering, and it has certainly been extraordinary. And I don't know who you touch that you don't affect the same way. You really have an ability to work with all peoples, regardless of their socioeconomic level, their race, their religion, their differences, your personal feelings. You are always right there, your hands out. You have the high regard of everybody with whom you work. And I know that it would be our belief to put you at the top of the category in which you belong. But being the type of leader you are with the sensitivities you have, I know that you would never, until everybody else is taken care of, want that to happen. You do have an incredible, hand-picked, top-notch staff and team at City Hall. It was remarkable to me, after being side-by-side with my husband for 12 years and getting a sense of City Hall, to really experience it with hands in the dirt, to see how every single person, I don't care what their job is, in this City Hall, first of all, does their job to the top level, doesn't complain, but how they admire you. I have yet to find anybody that doesn't hold you at the highest level, and you know, as a leader, you are only as good as your team. And you have made a remarkable, remarkable effect on what's happened since 2008, and you had the clarity to see it and take action in 2008 to see what was coming economically to our entire country, and you kept us on the line. The city council at that time was, of course, behind you, but you had the courage to know what to do, and it's beyond remarkable to me. And now to be involved in it, I just think you have been spectacular. What I want to make sure that everybody understands is not only has Betsy Fretwell been doing this work probably 24/7 for the city, but she has been working diligently with every other municipality, every agency in the county and the state, has a remarkable relationship with leadership, and yet us, the people, in every facet, and was elected to the leadership of this brand-new governor-inspired economic redevelopment charge. And everybody said Betsy Fretwell is the one to lead it and put this together. You're remarkable. You can tell from...except for Councilman Anthony, who will get his words if we haven't covered everything, but you are...you're inspirational beyond everything else, and you're solid, and the thing I love about you the most is that you're impatient, too. You want to see things happen today. Government works so slowly, but when you look around, and I'm listening to the accomplishments in this year alone, to say nothing of going back from the years that this has been under your stewardship, it is simply remarkable. In this awful economy, and I go to mayor conferences continuously, and to listen to Councilman Barlow talk about how he feels it in the League of Cities to which he has been involved, in which he's been involved for years, everybody is just down on their knees. It's coming back, but you have taken it further and faster. And we are doing things by...there's an idea out there. Betsy doesn't waste a minute to going to her leadership and they to their staff to bring changes, whether it's to public works, whether it's in something our development or building planning services, whether it's in our licensing. It's incredible. And all I can tell you is we will move you forward at the right time. I know if we offered to compensate you at the highest level where you belong, you wouldn't take it, because you love and rely on all these people, and until they're taken care of. So, I can assure you, we will, as soon as we are continuing and seeing the solid...the solidification of this small little...and we're getting little pieces to show our growth and good health, we will. We will do this. You're the best. Hang with us.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Barlow, for not letting her escape. We don't want...we're gonna intercept your mail and your emails, I can assure you. So, of course, with what I've said, Ms. Fretwell, I think you are really an incredible asset to the state, to your role as far as city managers, and we are blessed to have you, and thank you for everything. And thank you for being a friend to each one of us individually and inspiring us to grow. As you grow and learn things, you share it, you make us better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thanks, Mayor. So, this is your annual report, your annual performance report, and obviously, everybody thinks you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that's been set up here, and what's important, I want to emphasize, is that you are mission-oriented, you're strategic-oriented, and you're goal-oriented. You're just not running around making decisions. You're very strategic in what you do, and I really appreciate that. And based on what has been set up here, you should be rewarded for your performance. I mean, that's just how it works. People that do a great job should be rewarded. So, let me get kind of into the nuts and bolts. The one interesting thing about you is that you're the only employee at the city of Las Vegas that doesn't have a pay range. So, the mayor and I asked our human resource director to do a study and determine what exactly the pay range is for the city manager for the city of Las Vegas, and this is the pay range. The minimum is $175,311. The midpoint is $212,565, and the maximum is $249,819. So, entry level is a little over $175,000. You're making $2,000 more than entry level. That's ridiculous. That absolutely is. We discussed that with you, and you told us right up front you would not take an increase in your salary. You refuse to do that. If the people that work for you aren't getting a raise, you're not getting a raise, and I appreciate you taking that principled stand. But echoing what the mayor said, I...in the future, when we have these performance reviews, once the economy turns around, I believe we'll be able to compensate you the way you should be compensated. So, given that, the second part is I would also like to include you in the gain-sharing program that the city of Las Vegas is putting together, and I would also like to give you an extra 40 hours, one week, of vacation time that you can't be compensated for, but you need to take an extra week off, because I know you put in a lot more hours than you're paid for. So, my motion will be to establish the pay range for the city manager, to add you to the gain-sharing program, and to give you an extra 40 hours off.
Okay.
Yes, well, you would get an extra 40 hours off a year.
Thank you.
That will be my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion...whoops. There's no microphone. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Of course, motion carries.
I really appreciate all of the comments that you all made. It is very meaningful to me, and, you know, we're gonna keep getting this right and continuing to improve, and I thank you all for that support, because it is exactly what we need to keep going and getting the job done for you the best way we know how. So, thank you all very much. I probably didn't do it justice, because that was really incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you, and don't go away, because I want to remind you, I know in making this report and addressing us, you might not really be nervous, because you do it all the time, but maybe just a little bit. And I want to remind you that you can rehear all the compliments at 8:00 PM today, Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and Monday at 1:00 PM, and I bet your communications can give you a DVD. Betsy, we love you, and I have to stand and applaud you. You are the best. You have been seeing with us today up here on the dais, high school students from Ward Six and one from Ward Four, from...two from Ward Four. Oh, one from Ward Two as well. Which high schools in two?
O'Palo.
Oh, O'Palo, I thought that was yours.
Nope.
Oh, my goodness.
Simran.
You have Simran. Okay. Anyway, they have been up here helping us and waiting patiently. And Councilman Ross, would you like to address their next step?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm actually gonna let them, with your permission, introduce themselves and kind of tell us who they are and what they're doing up here and what they plan on doing in the days to come. So, Mayor, with your permission, can we start on this end?
Yes, because I just turned my mic that way.
And then Sierra's gonna talk about who they are, and then Dave's gonna talk about an upcoming project they've got coming. So, we'll start on this end.
Hi, I'm Brandon DeWitt from Pallaverty High School, and I am in Ward Two, and I am about to be a junior.
I am Whitley Viti from Centennial High School, and I'm about to be a junior.
Right.
I'm Sierra. I go to Centennial, and I'm gonna become a senior.
I'm Jaden Mosier. I'm from Arbor View, and I'm gonna be a senior.
Wait one second. Try again.
I'm Joshua Ballard, and I go to Shadrich, and I'm gonna be a sophomore.
I'm Dara Westberg. I go to Northwest Career and Technical Academy, and I'm gonna be a sophomore. And I just want to thank the council for letting me be here, and I'm just so thankful.
Beautiful.
Yes, sir.
I'm Heather Doto. I'm from Northwest Career and Tech Academy, and I'm going to be a junior, and I want to thank everybody for letting us come here today.
I'm Caitlin Wallace. I'm from Shadrich High School, and I'm about to be a sophomore.
And with that, Mayor, I will do the actual initial introduction of who these young students are. These are student leaders from four of high schools in Ward Six and one high school in, Councilman, yours is Ward Two. We have created the Northwest Youth Empowerment Project Council. We're still working on what we're going to call ourselves, but before Sierra talks about that and Jayden talks about a project coming up, I want to recognize a couple, a few people in the audience today, with your permission, Mayor. With us today and working with this great team of students and others, because there's more students than just this, is Professor Dan Chase from UNLV. Dan, would you stand up, please? Give him a round of applause for his efforts with his students. And I'm going to introduce both of these young ladies at the same time so they can stand up at the same time. Lisa Campbell from the City of Las Vegas and Michelle Thaxton from the City of Las Vegas, also working with these great students. You can applaud for yourselves, ladies, you know you can do that. With that, Mayor, Sierra, it's all yours. Tell us, tell us who you guys are.
So we are teens, and there's a lot of things going on in our community. We want to reduce that within teen pregnancy, drug and alcohol use, bullying and graffiti, and we're trying to make our community better, a better place and a safe environment.
Very good, very good. The whole idea, good job. The whole idea behind this youth council, mayor and council members and the audience and residents of the city, is getting these students engaged in the civic process, getting these, these young people, the future leaders of our community, engaged in how the city government works, opening opportunities and opening doors for them, perhaps starting them on a career path in public service. I just, I think it's important that we give them that opportunity. And with that, Mayor, with your permission, Jayden, you want to talk about something that's coming up that you guys are working on?
Our first project we're going to be working on is we're going to be painting curbs and fire hydrants to make the community a little bit safer for the people that live in it, and then we're having some projects we're talking about doing coming up, and we're looking forward to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jayden. And Mayor and council members also, this is a group of students who are led, who are leading themselves. They are making decisions, they have focused and identified issues and problems within their schools, their communities, their neighborhoods, and they're out there and they're going to make a difference. So I'm grateful that the mayor and council let the students sit with us today. Give them a great, great round of applause. They've got some things to go do, and we'll let them get out of here.
So we will now move on to item number, agenda item number 12, there is a correction, and items 12 through 35 are the ones on the consent agenda, not as noted here, if you have them in your program as 12 through 60. So moving forward, items 12 through 35 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to be brought forward on items 12 through 35? Hearing none, I would accept a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 20 through 35.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote.
12 through 35, sorry.
That's all right, 12 through 35. Please vote. And please post. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 36. This is an administrative item and an abeyance item, report for possible action regarding an update on the short-term residential rental ordinance. This is in reference to all wards, and Mr. Fag, please.
Mayor and members of council, good morning. I have been asked to give you a report on the status of our short-term residential rental ordinance. I've got a brief PowerPoint that I'd like to go through this morning, if I might. Okay, maybe the PowerPoint will load shortly. There we go. Just let me give you a brief history. We adopted an ordinance to permit short-term residential rentals in residential neighborhoods back in 2008. Previous to that, we had adopted an ordinance which prohibited such activity. With the adoption of the ordinance in 2008, the use became a conditional use in residential neighborhoods, the conditions being that they had to obtain a license from our business licensing division. The operator had to be available at all times to respond to any concerns relative to the operation of the short-term rental. The use is subject to the room tax, and so they do have to pay that and must also comply with noise and parking regulations. Just so that we're clear about what a short-term residential rental is, it's defined as renting a residential dwelling for a period of 31 days or less, and so it becomes like a hotel or motel use. It's basically to short-term residence or transients, as we would define it, and that's different than a long-term rental, which is a permitted use in residential neighborhoods. For example, if someone has an investment property that they rent for periods longer than 31 days, typically six months a year, where the occupants of that residence receive their mail there, they have the utilities in their name, that is a completely different operation than a short-term residential rental. And again, it's the period of the rental, 31 days or less, that makes it a commercial use, if you will. In terms of the status of the ordinance, we've issued a total of 119 licenses since the ordinance was adopted in 2008. Currently, we have 37 active licenses, 18 of which are in single-family residential zoning districts. In terms of enforcement of the ordinance, there are three entities that assist us in enforcing this ordinance. First of all, code enforcement, which is in the Building and Safety Department, and they are tasked with enforcing the zoning code or Title 19. Secondly, we have licensing compliance, which is located within the Department of Planning, and they are responsible for enforcing license violations. And then thirdly, Metro, our police department, assists with any issues relative to noise and public disturbances. In terms of the status of enforcement, code enforcement has opened a total of 30 cases resulting in 298 inspection visits. Our licensing compliance section has done 102 inspection visits over the past four years that we've had the ordinance in place. The most common complaints that we hear from short-term residential rentals is noise and disruption within the residential neighborhood, unlicensed properties, people doing short-term rentals without obtaining a license from business licensing, and then parking issues where guests of the short-term rental will be parked out in the street, blocking driveways, et cetera. There are a number of issues that we as staff have in terms of doing enforcement on the current ordinance. Number one is the ability to respond at the time of complaints. Typically, most of the complaints that we get from residents and neighborhoods occur on weekend evenings. Code enforcement is available on Saturdays during the day, they're not there in the evenings, and then our licensing compliance officers are available every other weekend, but only up to a certain hour in the evening. And so that's one of the difficulties that we as staff have. Also, Metro, in terms of responding, typically, they have other calls that are of more importance, homicides, robberies, things like that. And so public disturbances come a little bit further down on the list of priorities that they have, and while they're happy to assist, again, they have priorities in terms of public safety that they have to take care of. We also have the issue of training and safety issues for our enforcement folks entering residential properties. It's much different when you have a licensing compliance offer, officer entering a residential property wearing a polo shirt, not being armed, as opposed to having a police officer who would be entering a residential property. So we do have some concerns on the part of our staff in terms of their safety and their training and their ability to respond to certain complaints. With that, I'd like to talk about a couple of options relative to the current ordinance. Number one is to make no changes to the ordinance, and we continue to enforce it in the manner in which we have done. The second option that I would put before you is to look at adding additional restrictions to our current ordinance so that we have additional teeth, if you will, in terms of doing enforcement. We've studied other municipalities that have a similar issue with short-term rentals, where they have defined occupancy limits for residences in terms of the number of guests that you can have on the property at any one time. They also place limits on the number of vehicles that may be there on the site. Some have adopted additional noise restrictions, where they prohibit the outside amplification of music, for example, in pool areas at a residence. Another municipality has adopted a requirement that there needs to be a posted contact number that's visible from the street, so if there is noise or if there are complaints from residents in the surrounding neighborhood, that there is a number posted in the front window that they can call the property manager or the property owner and make their complaint directly to them. And then other municipalities have also adopted revocation procedures so that if you have three violations of the ordinance, you're no longer permitted a license to operate a short-term residential rentals. Or the adoption of civil penalties, which adds fines on top of any revocation procedures that they might have. In terms of enforcement, with adding additional restrictions, we would continue to enforce in the same manner that we do with code enforcement responding to zoning code violations, licensing compliance responding to Title VI violations of the business license ordinance, and Metro, again, with public disturbances. I think if we were to adopt additional restrictions, most of those would be placed in Title VI, which is our business licensing ordinance, and so most of that would fall under the Department of Planning in terms of enforcing those additional restrictions. The third option that you have available to you is that you could repeal the ordinance that we adopted in 2008 and no longer permit short-term residential rentals in residential neighborhoods. The issue with that is that we lose one of the branches of enforcement, that the only ability that we would have to enforce under that option is that code enforcement would respond to zoning violations, so the short-term rentals would be a zoning violation, code enforcement would respond to that, and then Metro for public disturbances. By not having that ordinance in place, we don't license them, and so consequently, licensing compliance cannot participate in the enforcement. So those are the three options that you have available to you relative to short-term residential rentals. What I would like to do at this time is get your input in which of the options you would prefer that we pursue and come back to you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, councilwoman.
I was involved with Councilman Wolfson when this short-term rental ordinance was done, and we did say that we would reevaluate it, and I'm glad we are doing that now. I want to say that I strongly believe that we need to stiffen it, do option number two, and I believe that because we need to look at not only strengthening the ordinance, but also, well, within the ordinance, if we are to strengthen it, to have these civil penalties, which we don't have now. Is that correct?
We don't currently have that ability under Title VI, our licensing ordinance.
So that really handstrings us, and also, I believe that we need to build and work harder on a stronger relationship with Metro. I know that they place these needs in order of priority, but sometimes there's ways we can work it so that we can get them more quickly. We've had a couple of our neighborhoods, in my ward, we were able to do that. So the civil penalties, the strengthening of the relationship with Metro, which I would suggest with what you have in option one, and then also to look at the noise ordinance that we have, because I think the noise ordinance affects this ordinance. And I believe, and I know that Betsy probably won't want to hear this, maybe the mayor won't either, but as we add, we're trying now to add personnel, I think it's absolutely necessary that we add an extra person in licensing or in code enforcement, or someone who can work across the lines between these entities regarding these types of ordinances. It's not right for our citizens, who sometimes feel their safety is threatened, to live the way they are living now with some of this party situation. That would, the noise would, you might also then, in addition to a person, buy a meter that measures noise. It's not hard to work it all, it's very easy to work, in fact, and you'll get the decibel noise. This gentleman that came up here about the dog barking. Every time we go to the animal control and we work on dog barkings, well, how loud is it? And, well, I don't know, and how do I measure? Well, if we had something here in the city, our people could use that, and we could measure the noise and see if it is breaking the limits. Even Metro will say that they have difficulty. You know, they're responsible for the noises that are beating out of one car to another car, and people complain about that. I'm very glad I can say that's Metro, not us. But I think that that piece of equipment, and I think adding an additional person, is really, really important, and it's a great area of concern. I have many calls in Ward One, and I hope that we'll be able to perhaps follow option two, where you're saying, "Let's stiffen it, let's add these other things that you suggested," and then I would suggest to, as we add personnel, Betsy, if we could add somebody there that helps us in meeting these needs, because as I say, the gentleman today, we have dozens of those that come with the animal noises. And I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have happened at party houses in Ward One, I've done that before, but it is not just a simple thing of, "Oh, I don't want to be bothered with noise." There's a lot of other things happening there. And we, we tried to place the personal who-to-contact, and they don't do that. And we, we listen to the taxi cabs at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and they're pretty loud because the people are coming out of the party laughing and talking and slamming of doors, and it isn't good for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, Councilman Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Flynn, do you know why the city council went from banning these, these uses to allowing them? Do you remember the history behind that?
You know, I don't remember the history behind that, unfortunately. I believe that there was the issue that when it was banned, people were still doing the short-term rentals, and again, we only had two methods of enforcement there, and that by adopting an ordinance, we were adopting standards and bringing in an additional body that could help to enforce the ordinance. So I believe that's the reason why they did adopt the ordinance back in 2008.
You know, you started out your presentation that these are kind of like hotel motels, and they've been called party houses, and I've had a few complaints in my ward, but, you know, I'm thinking of, you know, I'm a regular resident of Las Vegas, I live in a nice, nice residential area, I have, I live on a cul-de-sac, and, I mean, the last thing I want on my block is a hotel motel. You know, it just doesn't fit. So, you know, I would have it banned in my neighborhood, but apparently, it sounds like that some neighborhoods in the City of Las Vegas may be appropriate for this kind of a use. Is that, is that your, kind of your sense?
It's, it's hard to say that one neighborhood, one residential neighborhood, is more appropriate than another residential neighborhood. Certainly, this use is appropriate in commercial districts, in multifamily districts, it may be appropriate. One of the things that we have to be very careful of is because you do have people coming in on the weekend for short periods of time, they're coming, they're going, it does change the way of life of residents in that neighborhood, and so we have to be very careful about how it impacts the full-time residents of the neighborhood, so.
So how does somebody, how does somebody turn their rental property into a short-term rental property? How do they do that?
They have to obtain a license, first of all, a business license, and then we have a number of conditions that we have to adhere to in reviewing that application. The conditions, again, are in terms of complying with the room tax, so they have to pay their room tax, and that's something that we audit through our business licensing division. Also, they have to comply with noise regulations, so we have that as a condition of approval.
But if they get the license and they meet the conditions, you can't deny them. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I tell, you know, I don't know if it's the right thing to do to ban them, but, you know, I'm thinking even it should maybe go towards a special use permit. So if somebody wants to put a, a short-term rental in a particular neighborhood, some neighborhoods it may be appropriate, some neighborhoods it may not be appropriate, so that's kind of my, my thoughts on that. I know we're not going to make any decisions today, but I, I think we're really... I know we're not going to make any decisions today, but I think we really need to get more of a handle on this, so we don't have somebody turning a house into a party house in a residential area and throwing that residence into an uproar, and we're sending code enforcement and metro out there. It's not fair to the rest of the neighborhood, so I think we really need to think hard and fast about really putting some restrictions, even more maybe than what you've recommended. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you a few questions, Mr. Fack, if I may.
Certainly.
And having lived here a very long time, I see neighborhoods, and even in our own, where we have people who I know maybe have given the use of their residence, and if not complied and gone to licensing for anything, and are just doing it, and have noise, and have dogs, and have loud volume. So I question you about how much of this, of these groups or people or rentals are doing it that they haven't followed procedure at all? That's number one, a lot, and without notification. How many of are vacated, foreclosed upon, but not taken over by a bank, or being used for that same person, purpose? And so to go ahead and give an indication from my perspective alone, and having chatted with none of my peers here, I'm a little, first of all, I hate an overbearing government, I don't think that's our place. I don't know, on the other hand, living in an area for many, many years, same area, in Ward One, where this goes on with some frequency, because people are having parties, I'm not sure it's not some of our own children doing this when we're not there. So, and dogs, you know, people go off to work, and we hear a dog, as this has happened. I, rather than define something yet, I'm not comfortable that I have enough information. I think what you have given here today is very enlightening and bringing it about, but there's so many issues that don't fit and that we will not be addressing. And to go ahead and be the big cop out there and trying to get our city personnel who are looking at a bigger picture rather than the aberrant human being that's out there doing the wrong thing, or taking off for a week and saying to their college-age child, take care of the fish and the dog and the guinea pig, and don't have a party here, and yet they're inviting everybody that they know to come and have a week of glory in their eyes. So I don't, you know, before I personally, and would like to know legally, and I'm sure you've done this in vetting it all, where are the lines that we should not be crossing? I mean, and I worry about all those that aren't complying and haven't gone through the process. So I'd like more information. I know this is a report, and so we're accepting the report, which I do, and I thank you very much, because there's a lot of information I didn't know, but I need more, I need much more, and I don't know if this is something, you know, where we have gone out to the different wards to get an assessment in the wards, and are these unusual happenings, or are they continual recurrences in specific residence homes, in specific areas? So I appreciate your report, and I think it's something we need to attend to. It seems like, you know, to try and catch that one bad, you don't want to punish everybody else in the process.
Mayor, point of information, I would just like to say, we never had an ordinance that banned what we call party houses. I was the one who brought forward an ordinance to ban the party houses, and then Councilman Wolfson felt that it would be good not to have a total ban, we might be able to do it a little better, the way we have it now. And so we put it in place, but we said we would evaluate, because we did not know. So that's how this all started. I want you to know we never did totally ban them, at least not during the time I've been on the council. And the other thing is, that's why I mentioned the noise along with the party house, because you're right, there are other reaching problems that we need, if we're going to address them, and I think this is sort of what you're saying, I'm not sure, but I think this is what you're saying, Flynn, let's address this at one time and do the research and figure out what to do.
Councilman Coffin, you did want to...
I'm not sure that Flynn was going to respond, though, to Councilwoman Tarkanian. I don't know. Were you waiting for a response before I asked a question?
Are you making a response? It's fine.
Oh, yes, it's fine, okay.
Yeah, I noted your concerns about the noise, and certainly that's something that we will investigate as we proceed further.
Flynn, are bed and breakfast treated in any other portion of the code?
Yes, they are. They're considered to be a separate category, separate and distinct from the short-term residential rentals, and so we have a separate process for those to go through in terms of being permitted in neighborhoods.
All right. Then, has it to do with this issue, then I'll save it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beer.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to ask you to stop talking about my children. No, 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 I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I did want to inquire, as we do this research, if there is a mechanism to carve out a occupant who leases rooms and is on-site to supervise, the traditional boarding house of your...
Yes, actually, that is separate and distinct from short-term residential rentals. Where you have a resident who is renting out rooms to individual, and the resident stays there on the property, that is not a short-term residential rental, so someone still has the ability to do that. There is a limit on the number of rooms you can rent out, but still you do have the ability to do that, so that would not be impacted by any changes we might make to the short-term residential rental ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, are you playing a game right next to me? Would you care to make a motion to accept this report, please?
I will make a motion to accept the report.
There's a motion, please, vote. And please post. I did catch you. Councilwoman? Thank you very much. Thank you for the report, and look forward to the next step. Item number 37, Report on the Status of the City of Las Vegas Capital Improvement Projects and Maintenance of Infrastructure. This is in reference to all wards. Mr. Cervantes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Cervantes, Department of Public Works, and with me Larry Hogness with Operation Maintenance. Today, we're going to give a report on capital projects and the maintenance of these projects. Last month, we were here reporting on projects in the downtown area. Today, we're here to talk about projects throughout the city and all wards. We're going to start off first, we're looking at projects that we completed over the last year or so, starting off with roadway projects. We'll start off with Cliff Shadow Parkway. This project we completed a little bit over a year ago, but I included it because it ties in directly with the next project, which is Lone Mountain Road. For many years, our residents that live out in Lone Mountain West area had struggled trying to get out of the neighborhood, because there was only one way in and out of that neighborhood, and that was down Cliff Shadow Parkway and Clark County 215. Recently, we received permission from BLM to be able to make a connection of Lone Mountain Road into this neighborhood, to provide these folks with the ability to have another way out, and also importantly, to provide another way for emergency vehicles to be able to come and service this area. Before, if someone lived on the northern end, it was very difficult for fire, police to respond in a timely manner, and so this gives them a better way for them to get there.
Only Cliff Shadow Parkway has a bike path? These other two do not, or do?
I'm sorry?
The Lone Mountain Road and the Ann Road Sawtooth, do both of those have bike paths too, as you do up there on the Cliff Shadow?
No, ma'am. The only one that does is the Cliff Shadow Parkway, and the reason for that, what we did on Lone Mountain Road is just a temporary road to provide access. As those adjacent parcels develop over time, then we'll do full improvements and consider that. Similarly, Ann Road, when we get to this one here, what we did on Ann Road, Mayor, is we have a roadway out there, that's a very busy roadway, six-lane facility, but we had this one section about a block and a half long, that narrowed down to just one lane each direction, creating a lot of congestion, creating a lot of safety issues, and so through a special improvement district, we're able to go back and fully improve this section of Ann Road, so now we have a continuous six-lane road throughout the city. If we look at some additional roadway projects, we've been continuing and moving forward with some of our bus turnouts, and just completed five along the Charleston corridor. We try to do these bus turnouts not only as standalone projects, but anytime we're doing a roadway project, we try to incorporate those also. We just finished doing the median landscaping along Rancho from Charleston down to US-95, kind of enhanced that area. We had some oleanders that had been out there for many years, we're able to enhance that corridor by adding some palm trees and other amenities to it. On the flood control side, we've been concentrating a lot of our efforts up in the northwest. We've seen over the last couple of weeks, some of the rainy events that we've had up there, and some of our major flooding that's occurred, particularly in the northwest. You can see by this picture on the top here, the size of the facilities that are required to carry the volume water that's generated up there. This box in particular, you can see a front-end loader that's there in front of the box, and it kind of gives you a proportion of the size. This box is 24 feet wide by eight feet deep, and we've completed the section that goes from about Grand Tetons down through Elkhorn, Decatur, to 215, and are working on the northern end of that to tie in this whole system. We have similar facilities that we're doing more in the central part of the city, which is on the Oki Meadow storm drain, which came down Valley View down through Charleston, again, putting some very large facilities to capture some of that rain. These boxes are 18 feet wide by nine feet tall, so it's a very big systems. And as mentioned earlier, the two detention basins that we did at Floyd Lamb really helped out with this last rainy event, to capture some of that water and protect it. Taking advantage of having these drainage facilities, we incorporate recreational uses into them, and so you'll see up at Floyd Lamb, in addition to just having detention basins out there, we incorporate trails, recreational trails that folks can use. The detention basins are used only a couple of times a year, or needed, but the rest of the time, we're able to really use these facilities for just recreational purposes. If we look at some of the city facilities, we completed two fire stations this year. Fire Station 106 at Stella Lake and Mount Maria, and Fire Station 107 at Del Webb and Sundown. And if you look at the images, these two fire stations are very similar. The reason for that, these are really the first installation of our new prototype that we're using for our fire stations. These are LEED Silver Certified facilities, that in addition to providing service out there, help us with some of our energy conservation. Other facilities that we worked on, we've been moving forward with our energy retrofit of city facilities. You can see we're replacing some of the mechanical plants at our facilities, replacing some of the heating and cooling systems. We've done that at the Development Service Center, the Detention Center, and Fire Station 41. At the Development Service Center, in addition to retrofitting our mechanical plant, we replaced our single-pane windows with dual-pane windows, again, providing more efficiency in that older building. We've done 25 sites where we've done solar-covered parking at different fire stations, parks, community centers. From this, we found that we're generating about 1.8 megawatts of power a year based on these installations, saving the city about $400,000 in electrical costs and providing power to these different facilities. And we're continuing moving forward with the LED streetlight program. We finished Phase One, which did about 6,000 installations this year. We're moving forward with the 35,000 additional, we're deepening that right now. Once this is all completed, we're going to see a annual savings of about $1.5 million in energy a year. This is greater savings than we originally anticipated. We originally anticipated saving 30% to 40% in power. What we're finding with the installations and measuring electricity consumption, we're actually generating, saving up to 50% to 60% in power consumption with these installations. When we look at our park and recreational trails, we completed Duck Selby Park and Trailhead, really it was a two-park type of project. There's the Las Vegas Watch that separates two large parcels. On the north end, we provided an area with soccer fields, basketball courts, a dog run, some play equipment, and on the south end, not only does it function as a trailhead, we provided some totlot areas, some water features, some splash pads for kids to be out there and recreate. We reconstructed Rotary Park and provided some new picking shelters, a play area, again, splash pads, those are very popular here, particularly in the summer, and some restrooms. And at Teton Trails, we did what we call Phase Four. Previously, we had built some fields out there, and we went back and put in some shade structures so that folks out there, watching their kids play, would have an ability to get out of the environment and be in the shade. At Doc Romeo and Betty Wilson Park, we added some restrooms. These two facilities are heavily used by league play, we have a lot of activity year-round there. We had some restroom facilities out there, but really needed to have some more to service that properly. At Durango Pool, we added some shade structures...
Excuse me, could I ask, at nighttime, at Doc Romeo and Betty Wilson, the restrooms, are they locked?
I believe that they get locked at 11:00 PM when the park shuts down.
Okay, thank you.
At Durango Pool, we again added some shade structures for the facility out there. Barkin Basin, again, is used as a detention basin, but we've got a trail that goes around this facility. A lot of folks like to go out there in the evening and walk, so we put illumination around it, and we have three dog run cells that are in the bottom of the basin, and they're probably one of the heaviest-used dog runs that we have in the city. And similarly, when we're in the winter, it gets dark at 6 o'clock, a lot of folks like to go out there after work to walk their dogs, so we illuminate the dog runs also. And at Doris Hancock School, we added some exercise equipment and some walking trails. So if we look at fiscal year '12, we completed a total of 36 projects with a value of about $228 million. Now, this value doesn't include the investment that was made in City Hall, the investment that was in Forman Arts Center, this is in addition to the work that investment was done there. So that equates to about, an equivalent of about 2,700 construction jobs that were generated based on these projects. If we look at projects that are currently underway, either under design and construction, we start off with the roadway projects. We're doing the Jones Valley View project. Although these are two separate corridors, we're considering one project, and the reason for that is, we're trying to add north-south capacity on our corridor. Typically, when you do a corridor project and you want that capacity, you add one travel in each direction. To avoid having to impact some of the residents there, what we did is, we're adding one lane in the northbound direction on Valley View, and one lane in the southbound direction on Jones, that gives us that added capacity, but without impacting those folks that live around there, without having to do any property takes or impact any homes. We are continuing on the Huntridge, Phase Six Neighborhood Rehabilitation. Older neighborhood streets out there are 50 to 60 years old, that's where the utilities. We've completed most streets and are finishing up Sixth Street, it will be done in the near future. And at Decatur and Charleston, we're doing intersection improvements, such as adding right-turn lanes, dual-left turns, and we do that often to add capacity. On the D Street corridor, we're doing this as a complete street type of project. You can see from the picture that we're going to be widening the sidewalk, adding some trees for shading along the corridor on the sidewalk area, putting in some ornamental streetlights with banners, and putting in some bike lanes, and this will be going from Washington to Owens. And as part of the Safeway Out to School project, we're doing some improvements along Henson and along Las Berdias in front of Berdias School. You can see the picture there, where today on Henson, there is no sidewalk, and so the kids are forced to walk either in the street in the dirt area. Instead of doing our typical five-foot sidewalk, we're actually doing 10-foot sidewalk, so this corridor can be used for multipurpose, as not just for kids in walking, but also kids in bikes, so it'll be a multifunctional trail. And similarly, in front of the school, we'll be widening that also. We're going to get a start on the Charleston median landscaping project, this will be from Sixth Street down to Maryland Parkway, similar to what we did on Rancho, we'll be doing that on Charleston. And as part of the electric bike program, we're providing bike lane markings and signings to connect governmental facilities within the downtown. We'll be providing bike lanes that connect the DSC down to this facility, some of the government centers, and to the medical district, and so we'll see new bikelings along Mesquide, along Shadow Lane, along Sixth Street, and some even around Lorenzi Park. And our sidewalk infill project is where we're going to some of the more mature areas of town, and installing sidewalks where either sidewalks don't exist, or sidewalks are very old and need a replacement. We're starting with the area just east of Las Vegas Boulevard, north of Charleston, going up to about Bruce Street as the first phase in Area One. Area Six is in West Las Vegas, the limits from about I-15 down to MLK, and north up to about Owens. And so as we progress with this project, and additional funding becomes available, we look to expand this program to other mature areas of town that need this type of facilities. Last year, you all adopted a couple of walkable community plans. This year, we plan, start to implement some of the improvements that are associated with the plan. If you look at the metal-lane walkable community, the picture on the top there, you can see where south of metal lanes, we have all the residential homes. And north of metal lanes, we've got the YMCA, we've got the Metals Mall, we've got the Cardinal Supermarket, and for these folks to get to there, they got to go all the way around, either to Decatur or down to Valley View to be able to access it, and so it's not very convenient for people to walk. As part of this project, we're going to do some openings on that wall that's on the south side of Metals, for pedestrians only, so people in the neighborhood that want to walk to the YMCA or go over to the supermarket, will be able to do that more comfortably. We're also going to add a sidewalk on the south side of metal lanes, since no sidewalks there, again, just make it easier for these folks to get to where they need to be. The Sahara West, the walk-up community, similar, you see the rendering on the bottom. All the residential is south of Sahara, all the commercial, the restaurants, the theater, movie theater are north, doing improvements, so it makes it easier for these folks to be able to walk to these facilities instead of having to drive. And the pedestrian bridge just started construction recently, connecting the area of downtown, which we are in here today, to the new Symphony Park area going over the railroad tracks. Continuing forward with some more flood control projects, we're out to bid right now for the Vegas Drive Storm Drain Project, going from Rancho to Michaelway, again, providing relief from flooding, also replacing the sanitary sewer system on this corner. corridor, and then rehabilitating the pavement. This pavement's old and bad shape in need of reconstruction, so that's out to bid right now. The Oki Storm Drain Project is a project that we started a couple of years ago, at I-15, got it down to Calhoun. This is the next reach that goes from Calhoun to Bernard, which is just east of Valley View, continuing to try to dry up the central area of our city. And then our sanitary sewer condition assessment program, this is a program where we go out there and we actually put a, a camera through all our sewer systems to see what condition they're in. You can see the picture on the bottom left there, where we identified some sections where some of the pipes are failing. We've identified the locations where there's just cracks in the pipe and a reline would be able to suffice. Relining the pipe allows us to rehabilitate it without having to impede traffic and tear it up the street, and then some manholes that we need to work on. And so this assessment has identified 14 projects that we're moving forward with. Typically, we're going to do these over a five-year period, but we're going to accelerate these and try to do this in a two-year period, about a $50 million investment to rehabilitate our, our sanitary collection system. Under city facilities, we're under design for Fire Station 108, which is on Page and Bonanza. Again, the same prototype that we've seen on the other two fire stations just completed. We're finishing up the Neon Museum Visitor Center. This will be a place for folks to go and get information, so if they want to go to the bowling yard and see the signs, they've got an ability to get that information.
Will that open this summer?
It'll open, I think we're looking, shooting for an opening in October, Mayor. Guard Site Pool is also under design, reconstruct that, provide not only a pool for folks to do exercises, but also a, a pool adjacent to it where more for recreational use with water features for the kids to be able to play. And then at the Water Pollution Control Facility, we have several treatment process enhancements that are in place, 10 projects out there where we're rehabilitating some of our systems, upgrading some of our systems, approximately $80 million improvements going on out at that treatment plant. Under Parks and Recreation Trails, we're working on Lorenzi Park Phase Two. We did the east side of the park a couple of years ago by redoing the baseball fields, put in some tennis courts. We're now doing the west side where we're reconstructing the lake back to its original configuration. We're including some basketball courts in that area. We're putting some picnic shelters and some trails, and that will probably be done in the next six months. The Raptor Play Park Phase Two, similarly, we did the west end of that park a couple of years ago. We're going back and finishing that park on the east side. It's a smaller, more family type park, so we'll have a large grass area for people to be able to play, picnic shelter, and there'll be actually a replica of a Raptor fighter plane, you can see down in the right-hand corner there. And then Stewart Park, Stupac Park, this is going back and building the park where the old community center used to be. We relocated the community center south to where the park was. Now, we're rebuilding the park on the north end to add a large play area and add a basketball court and some splash pad features. At Myron Levitt Family Park, we're doing a second phase of it. We, we did some improvements recently, but we're going back to put some covers over the bocce courts, the horseshoe courts, the shuffle courts, so that they got some protection, doing a skate park up in the northeast corner of the park, and doing some shade covered parking for folks out there with solar cover, so again, generating power to, to power up our facility and save us some money. Duck Selby Park, we're going back and adding some covered picnic shelters, a restroom and a tot lot. And the Las Vegas Wash Trail Phase Two, this is really finishing off the last segment that we have on the Las Vegas Wash Trail. It's a trail that goes not just through the city, but into the county throughout the entire valley. It'll include two pedestrian bridges, one over Lamb and one over Charleston, so that folks using these trails have an easier way of crossing these, these heavy traffic corridors. And so as we build all these facilities, we need to make sure that we also continue and improve and maintain them. And so Larry's going to cover some of the efforts that they do in maintaining these facilities.
Thank you, Jorge. Larry, welcome, and it's really exciting what's been accomplished. Fabulous.
I just ask a question. I didn't see a trailhead at Bill Brier Park. Is that in, or is it, did it get delayed?
No ma'am, we're working on it. What we're showing today is not all the project we're working on. We actually have about 100 capital programs that we're working on right now. We just picked, highlighted a couple of them to show you, but that's part of the one we're working on.
And if you'll excuse us for one second, I see we have a question. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm wondering if this is the appropriate time to ask questions. Are you finished with the presentation?
We've got one more segment. We're talking about the maintenance of these facilities, which-
Then I'd like to wait, Your Honor. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Jorge. I am Larry Hadnus. I'm the Director of the Operations Maintenance Department for the city. Just to give you an idea, how much infrastructure we have in the city, that's currently valued at $5.6 billion. So it's, it's not a, not a small investment we made in the city. I'd like to first start talking about our, our parks facilities and our, our facilities. We have a total of 75 parks, of which there are 1,100 acres are developed. There's an additional 600 acres out at Floyd Lamb Park that is not developed. In these parks, there are 125 playgrounds that contain 224 pieces of equipment and 72 restrooms. Uh-oh. Okay. Within these parks, there are 25 parks that have sports fields in them. They're used for softball, baseball, lacrosse, football, and soccer. There are 113 natural turf fields and 22 synthetic turf fields for a total of 135 We also maintain 12 school sites for Clark County School District. These are part of the Open Doors, Open Schools agreement we have with the school district, and they contain 37 acres of land.
Are these, does the school district pay for that?
No, they do not. It's part of our-
They do not.
What, what we get in return is we get to use them for programming purposes.
And your, your artificial turf, are you taking any of the natural turf and replacing them with the artificial this year?
In the coming year, Jorge has a project, I believe, to do All-American Park will be replaced.
Thank you.
All right. In our, in the area of facilities, we have 257 city-owned or leased facilities that occupy 3.2 million square feet. We have six swimming pools, 10 water wells, and over 1,100 air conditioning units that we maintain. We also maintain 25 miles of medians at 33 locations that are comprised of 104 acres This map is showing what, what land we, we manage. We have 12, or 1,900 acres of city-owned property and 4,100 acres of BLM property that we have under various arrangements. That's a total of 6,000 acres of land that we manage. My button's not very responsive. When you put it all together on a map, this is what it looks like, all the facilities and parks and things we have all around the city. It's kind of an impressive little map. We also maintain trails, as Jorge talked about trails earlier. We have 75 miles of trails that we maintain that occupy 20 acres of land. I'd like to now go into the street maintenance area, streets and sanitation area. This is the map that shows our slurry seal program for this current year. We have over 1,300 miles of street. On an average year, we'll do 148 miles of slurry sealing. And I just went blank. Okay, there, we're back. This, so this is the 2012 work plan. This is the 2013 work plan, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018. You can see that in the course of seven years, we cover the city from top to bottom. We are in the process of going to a 10-year schedule. This will free up some money to devote to ADA enhancements and perhaps some more money for our, our arterial reconstruction program. We feel like we're not doing quite enough work on our, on our major streets at this point.
Question, Mayor.
And Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hogs, it's just for the residents, citizens' benefit, these are only the streets in the city of Las Vegas. As I look at your 2014 schedule for a lot of the areas out in the northwest, those, those are large county islands. We are not-
That's correct.
Doing the slurry seal on those county islands. The county has its own pavement plan of their own, correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay, I just want the residents of the city to recognize that, that, that those are county islands and we're expending their resources in the city of Las Vegas. Thank you, Mr. Hogs.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Please, continue.
I mentioned a minute ago our arterial reconstruction program. This is the work that was accomplished in the last five years that was funded through RTC fuel tax and through ARA, ARA funding. This comprised of over 1.1 million square yards of pavement that was rehabilitated in the last five years. We have a similar program going for the next six years. This is what's planned for, this is what's planned for 2012, 2013, 2014, 15, 16, and These two programs combined are very important to keep our street system in the condition it's in. For every dollar we spend on street maintenance, we get $3 in return in, in not having to invest in totally new construction. So these are dollars that are extremely well spent, and our, our crew does a great job of keeping them up. A little project we've been working on the last couple of years have been the median enhancements that have been extremely popular. This is on Upland from Charleston to Jones, on Charleston from Valley View to Rancho, on Rampart from Lake Mead to Cheyenne, on Cheyenne from Walupi to Durango, on Eastern from Sahara to Charleston, on Ann Road from Tenaya to Decatur, and on Vegas Drive from MLK to Rancho. These projects were completed at an average cost of $90,000 each. It took approximately four weeks to complete them. They were done with both city manufactured material as well as some privately purchased material.
Mr. Hogs, I see Jerry Walker in the audience today. Just want to express to both of you, thank you very much. And I want everyone in the council to recognize these score pins in the northwest are larger than the rest of the city. Just wanted to point that out. So thanks for that, Jerry.
Thank you.
And the artwork's phenomenal.
What's that?
The artwork, are they local artists or are these, and made here?
The, the, the ones that you see that are the wire cages are actually built by our own employees and, and they're, they're, they're their own creations, so they're, they're, it's just our employees that are that talented to do this kind of work.
Applause, applause.
Thank you, thank you. These are extremely well received, so.
You know, and I, I think this goes to show the ability and the flexibility of city personnel because I remember when we started this, who was the lady that came to us with the little wire sculptures?
It would have been Marty.
Marty. Marty came to us. We said what we wanted to do. We didn't have water. What could we do? And she came with these little pipe cleaner structures, showed them to us, and then it, your people took it over and did such a fantastic job, but now we get calls from everybody that want to buy them.
That's, that's exactly what it is.
And they want to buy them. So this, all this creativity, all this hard work and the thinking of how we could do this came from our city personnel, and it started just, I believe, with one meeting we had with Marty, and then she just carried it over and it went from our ward to other wards to other wards. I just think it's a, a big, something we should be very, very grateful to our, our personnel in the city. They did a great job.
And such talent. I mean, absolutely incredible, great job, great job.
And, and these were all totally designed and built by city, by city crews. There was no outside assistance on them. I'd like to talk a little about our flood control system. This map shows the regional facilities that we maintain. There are 14 detention basins, 82 miles of storm, of channels and storm drains. This is the larger system that's installed by the regional flood control system. In addition to this, there's 400 miles of a local system that we maintain. We clean over 60,000 inlets in the course of a year. So it's, it's really a big, good-sized system. I'd like to now talk a little about our sanitary sewer system. This is a map that shows the sanitary sewer system as it developed between 1911 and 1949. This is how it was developed between 1950 and 1974, and between 1975 and 1999, and between 2000 and currently. So this is the system. There's over 1,700 miles of sanitary sewer line that we maintain. 73 miles of that are actually located outside the, the city limits, so. That really concludes a portion of my, of my presentation. I want to thank the city management for all the support they give us, the city council for their support, but mostly I want to thank our employees of not only our department, but the whole city that really come to the front and do the work that's required to keep this to be such a great city.
Thank you so much. I will tell you, we are really proud. I mean, we are proud of the employees and we are so proud of the results and the hard work that goes. Everybody just accepts everything that what is, is. It's not that way. It's the effort and time and the caring that each one of your people in your departments make happen for us. I mean, it's simply glorious. Congratulations. Thank you. I don't know if we have any questions here. Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, my question is a global question, although I got to say, I learned on a microscopic basis. When I first came in, you were very familiar with Huntridge Phase Six, which I thought was just going to be a repaving project, but actually is a total rebuild of the roads in the Huntridge area, going way down there, going down two or three feet if you can. I mean, it's literally a replacement of type 2 rock all the way up through the fines, I mean, really, you know, and then the various layers until you get to the asphalt. So although I have known in, in, you know, in a general way about how roads are built, and I've been involved in budgeting for road repair and replacement for many years, I just never really had a look of it until it was at my front yard. And, and I saw, even though I've lived here 60 years, I saw stuff under there that the city didn't even know existed. And that is one of the problems with our town, that you look at what was done between 1911 and 1949, and you see so much of it there, and still there, frankly, functioning in some places. And so I heard a number mentioned early on, Larry. Did you say $5.6 billion? What was that number related to?
Councilman, that's the value of the infrastructure as it exists today.
Is that the value that, that's been invested by the taxpayers as you can figure?
That would actually be what, what it would cost to replace it at this point in time, as I understand it.
You know, I think $5.6 billion is a low estimate of the actual replacement cost of, of the infrastructure of this city. And because I've seen just through Phase Six, which representative of many, many square miles of the older part of town, where you, you go down there and you find out the water pipes, you know, instead of being three feet or four feet where they ought to be, they're two feet down. And you can't quite do your road job because you can't lower the water pipes because the watering district didn't want to spend a half million dollars to lower them. So we ended up doing the job around that with halfway measures, doing our very best to try to fix it, adding months to the project. So I'm catching heck from my neighbors on this, but it's a good lesson. In any event, the point is that I, I just really want to see us generate, for, I hope for everybody's benefit, some sort of an inventory of, a true inventory of all of our assets in an aged fashion, how long they were, how, how old they are, how, what was their expected life when they were installed? What's their expected life now? Because you find out some things do last longer. Some things don't last longer. They last less. Look at artificial turf. I mean, for parks, that was thought to be something that would last longer and doesn't. So my feeling is that until the taxpayers of this city understand the true value of what's on the ground, under their feet and under their cars that they drive, they will never understand what kind of problems we face. And until we speak about these problems and we outline what our responsibilities are to them, and if we are courageous enough to talk about what we need to do to keep this city up, I think we're going to find out that we are woefully underfunded and that our city is going to fall farther and farther into disrepair. Because I do not believe that our schedules of replacement are aggressive enough, and I, and I frankly think that we can't, at the present level of taxation, maintain our infrastructure, which I'm going to say to you, I'm sure, it's a heck of a lot more than $5.6 billion. It, it could be twice that replacement value, three times that. And I need to know if you really think, as engineers, we can truly maintain our city with the present level of spending. Are our schedules adequate? Are our schedules adequate? There's talk about slurry seal, and on a seven-year schedule, I think, those roads in that neighborhood hadn't been slurry sealed in at least 20 or 25 years. So, I don't know how many, you know, just don't get counted. They get deferred, they get put off. Something looks good but isn't. And as you found out, it needed a whole rebuild. And that's not a high-impact street, a group of streets. That's just a neighborhood. So, I really want to see this done in detail for us because I think it is something that we need to tell the legislature about. The largest city in the state, the income generator for most of the tax dollars for this state, has an aging infrastructure, and it cannot be a good, how do we say, ultimately a very good host for tourists, our lifeblood, if we can't keep it up. And not a very nice place to live if you're a permanent resident, if you can't keep it up. And I'm sure that we're falling behind. And I don't think we really want to talk about that very much. It's just seemed like it's been something, because in the end, you say, well, how do you catch up? You catch up with taxes. You catch up with tax dollars. And we don't have enough taxing authority right now to keep up with the aging for infrastructure in Southern Nevada. Now, that is my instinct, and I'll wager it's true on paper, but I really need to know this. I need to show this to my legislator, who, you know, might or might not be interested in giving local government the ability to meet its needs, so that he himself or she herself could say to their constituents, yeah, we're doing our very best, but of course, you know, we don't let the city have its money because we don't want them to have high taxes. Well, if you want to have a good city, you're going to have taxes. There's just no way around it because you're going to have to have a good place to live. It's not free. So, I need to have these numbers, and I think they're of general interest to the council and the public. I'm sure the press would be interested in these things. But I don't think it's been done in a detailed fashion, and I know it'd take a long time to do it, but I really believe, if you take what you've got, you've got the data, you've got it out there in discreet packages. I'd sure like to see it all grouped together. And then I'd like to see, I'd like to challenge your numbers in terms of values and in terms of your replacement schedules. This is a wonderful city. It has grown so much since a little microscopic place that I saw when I came here. And yet, I think we've been living on the cheap based upon the money we had in the past, and we don't have that money coming in for many years based upon our present tax schedule and our present laws, which handicap severely local government's ability to meet its needs. So, have I made my request clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Your Honor, for letting me ask that question.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hogness, first and foremost, let me say that the sculptures in the middle of all of the islands throughout the city of Las Vegas has been a hit. Residents have been raving about how fun it is to actually see those sculptures in the middle of our medians, and I believe that it's a very artistic way of not only being energy as well as water efficient. It's a great way to celebrate culture in the middle of the desert as well, as far as some of our great native animals and species here in the state of Nevada and the city of Las Vegas. So, I just wanted to give you and your entire staff kudos for that. Jorge, I know that with the projects that you've listed in your PowerPoint, you and I have had, I guess, going on four years of conversation as it relates to the, what is it, the off-ramp that I brought to your attention, that I would like to see at Owens and I-15, being able to relieve not only the traffic on I-15 between Lake Mead and Washington, but also provide an access point for traffic to get off at Owens at some future date. And so, I just want to know where we are in the process of those conversations, or what is it that we must do in order to really speed the process up? You know, if it's a matter of me coordinating a meeting with Senator Reed's office, Congresswoman Berkeley's office, pulling in Susan Martinovich from NDOT, the RTC, of course, yourself and whomever else we need to basically get these conversations going, I just want to know what is it that we can do to put a plan of action in place to start moving in that direction?
Certainly, Councilman. We previously did several studies that looked at what are different options, how to invite an interchange configuration to that area. We looked at potential frontage roads that would be able to serve as an interchange for that facility. We actually, Councilman, are at the next step. We just received funding from the RTC through what they call the Unified Work Program, where we're going to take it to the next level of higher-level design to tweak it so we can start the environmental process. Any facility that touches an interstate system or has federal funding has to go through environmental clearance process. And so, we just received funding to take it to the next level for a more refined design to start the environmental process so we can get a project that's environmentally cleared and so we can start looking at federal funding, potential future federal funding to be able to build a facility like this. So, that's where we are, Councilman. We've got the funding to move it to the next step and get closer to the environmental clearance.
Okay. So, after the environmental clearance, then the next step is to identify the dollars in order to do the design and bill?
The environmental clearance actually takes it up to what we call a 30% level design. We did, took it to 15% already. This will take it to 30%. Once we have environmental clearance, then we've got to identify a funding source. And so, the funding source, once we get that, will take it to 100% design plus build the construction. And so, we're taking it up to a 30% level to start clearing it environmentally through the process.
Okay. And in addition to your PowerPoint, you had a couple of solar-covered parking slides that you also shared with us here today. One question I have as far as, and I spoke to, his name slips me now.
Pat Pate or Tom Perigo?
Tom Perigo. Tom Perigo in regards to the Dulittle parking, solar-covered parking at Dulittle, and also the opportunity to have solar-covered parking here at City Hall where the liaisons park out back. Their cars are getting destroyed by the sun back there, and so I know that if there's an opportunity for us to cover those parking stalls back there, because they don't park in the garage across the street, what is it that we can do to assist with those two items, Dulittle and also the parking in the back?
Councilman, we'll work with Tom to see how we can try to get that up. A lot of these facilities we've built through different grants that we get out of NV Energy, and they usually will have a call for projects saying we've got funding available, submit your application. So, I'll work with Tom's office and see when the next call for projects are, or try to identify an alternate funding source to see if we can try to move those up.
Okay. And finally, Mayor and Council, Lorenzi, I believe in previous conversations with Phase 2, there was a splash pad included in on that project. Has that been taken out, or am I missing something as it relates to the Phase 2?
Let me check here real quick, Councilman, and see what it shows on there. I don't see it on the listing, Councilman. I'm not sure if it was taken out, but we'll get together with you on this project, Councilman, because actually, when we met with you earlier before we started the project, if you recall, we used some of your residential tax to cover a gap in the funding. This project force has been coming in very good, no cost overruns. We actually have a contingency fund that's available. So, I'll get together because we have the opportunity to refund some of the money that we borrowed from you from your residential construction tax for some improvements out there. So, we're scheduling that meeting to meet with you on that.
Okay. And the money that you borrowed comes with interest. So, let's make sure that we see if we can work this splash pad back into that program. I appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Sanchez, please.
Two things. I guess relating to the covered parking, the solar parking here at City Hall, we worked with Tom Perigo. Due to the sunlight that we receive, it's not cost-effective to go out there and install solar covering. So, what we're going to do is we're going to put standard parking, shaded parking back there. We're working with the developer for City. We're still waiting on a timeline, but as soon as we can get it up and running, we're moving forward with that. For the life cycling of our city assets, we took an inventory, physical inventory of all the assets that we have, life cycling and when they'll need to be replaced. We're developing a budget right now, what it's going to cost, so we can start budgeting for it now instead of having to wait. And we'll present this every year at our budget cycle so we can start setting money aside so we can make sure that we maintain the best assets in the city. Right now, it's just done manually. We're in the process of getting with IT to get it up program so we can update this continuously. We have a pretty good fill on it. We started this last year. This is part of my second, my goal for Betsy, to go out to make sure that we do this next year. So, we're on it. We realize the need for it because we do want to maintain our assets and maintain the beautiful city that we have today.
Thank you so much. It was well said. We needed to hear that. Thank you both very much. What a great city, what a great job. Thank you very much. I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair right now, and you're going to accept the report first. Very well done.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make a motion to accept the report.
There's a motion? Please vote. Motion carries again. Thank you very much. And I am going to take the prerogative of the chair at this moment and move forward item number 45, because people have been here since very early in the morning. Mr. Olivas, I hope you will, we will be brief here. And item 45, for your information, is board and commissions. We have an audit oversight committee that we have terms expiring, and those, some of whom, or a few of whom, would like to stay on. But the oversight committee, Michael W. Kern, his term expires August 18, 2012; Paul Workman, term expires August 18, 2012; and William Allen Karcher, term expires 8/18/2012. Mr. Karcher was with us in the brief commentary this morning, and I thanked him. He has chosen not to continue service on the audit committee after many years there and valuable. And the procedure for this committee requires the appointment, reappointment by the mayor with ratification by the city council. The options are...
If I could, Your Honor, I spoke with Mr. Kerns about an hour ago, and after discussing the issue, he will not be seeking reappointment to the committee, and we agree with that decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. And because I have not had an opportunity to talk with council on these appointments, except for Mr. Karcher, Paul Workman has indicated he would like to continue to serve on the audit committee. So, I'd like to take these individually, please, and I would like to move to reappoint Paul Workman to continue on the audit committee. So, there's a motion here. Please vote. Motion carries. And on the withdrawal from and term limit for Mr. Karcher, I move and would like to appoint Bernetta Stebritz, who is here in the audience. I'd love you to come forward. A remarkable talent and just have worked with her for years. She is a native Las Vagan. And could you just give a brief synopsis of your background? Because aside from the fact that I would die on a dime for this person because of knowing her reliability, her integrity, and her knowledge base, so could you share just a little bit before I move on this?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Bernetta Stebritz. My name is Bernetta Stebritz. I have been in Las Vegas since 1975, graduate of high school here, college, UNLV twice, class of '90, class of '87. I'm a certified public accountant since 1993. I served four years with a public accounting firm, local, Piercy, Boulder, Taylor &amp; Kern, and for the last 18 years have been the Director of Business and Finance for the Meadows School, which is a nonprofit organization out in the Summerlin area.
Some of your other credentials that you have, please, if you'd mention.
I'm a member of good standing of the AICPA, which is the national organization, and the Nevada Society of CPAs also since 1993.
So, any questions for her? They better not be difficult, because I didn't tell her I was going to call her up.
It's all right.
Okay. I would then move to go ahead and to appoint Bernetta Stebritz to the position vacated by Mr. Karcher. So, there's a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Welcome to the audit committee. You will be hearing from Beverly Bridges here, our city clerk, as to when the next meeting is, which is soon, I think. And we're delighted. And reference the appointment, I would rather obey at least till the 15th discussion on who should fill Michael Kern's. So, if that is all right, I will move to obey Michael Kern's appointment to August 15. So, if you will, please vote on that. Thank you all very much, and thank you for allowing me that. And Bernetta, thank you so much. We welcome you. We will now move on to item number 38. And discussion for possible action on a proposed legislative package to be submitted to the Legislative Council Bureau on behalf of the city of Las Vegas for the 77th session of the Nevada Legislature 2013 Session. This is in reference to all wards. And Mr. Olivas, sorry I had you wait.
That's fine. Mayor Goodman, good afternoon. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. I was here a little over a year ago at the end of our last session, and we presented to you a book about how that session went and the things that we were going to be required to do in the interim and in preparing for the next session. I believe that you all have a copy of this PowerPoint presentation. What I'm going to do today is give you a brief overview of the upcoming session, who the team is, legislative committees that we're tracking, some of the other interim activities that we've been involved in since the last session, some legislative topics that we're anticipating for next session, as well as potential bill draft requests for next session. As you know, the session is quickly approaching. We're about six months away. It starts next year on February 4. The session lasts for 120 days. The city has up to three bill draft requests that we need to submit on or before September 1st. As we've been reporting, we're up to 160 bill draft requests that are on the legislative website. We don't have details on what those bills are, but we're starting to do outreach now and find out exactly what they are and how they affect the city of Las Vegas. Essentially, we have the same team from the last four sessions. We believe that there is, the continuity of representation has been good for the city of Las Vegas. We have a lot of the same players, myself, LeAnn Lee, Ostrowski &amp; Associates, which includes Bob Ostrowski, Misty Grimmer, Mike Sullivan, I believe they're here in the audience today. The mayor and council provide us direction. You're part of the team while we're in Carson City, and our core Las Vegas team, including Betsy, Tom, Val, Steed, and others. And of course, the foundation of all the information that we need while we're 450 miles away is the directors and their legislative liaisons who have to look at these bills and let us know what they think. We're, of course, generalists. They're the experts that help craft our positions on any given bill during the session. Wanted to just go through a few of the interim legislative committees and interim studies that may think of interest. In particular, the third bullet there, the C-Tax Committee, it's an interim committee that is, has been meeting for the last six or eight months now. It's chaired by Assemblywoman Marilyn Kirkpatrick. Mark Vinson has taken the lead on this. We're using applied analysis to gather the data for this committee for which they can make some recommendations. They're jointly funded by not only the city of Las Vegas, but the city of Henderson. We believe that that information has been very helpful in the deliberations that they're having to try to craft some recommendations that are good for the state and good for this C-Tax formula. And we've, of course, briefed you on this during those discussions and those deliberations. Of course, the education and the funding thereof, how is that going to all get worked out? We have our own education initiative. So, we're watching those committees as well. It's not just higher ed, it's K through 12 as well. Statutory committees of interest. These are ongoing committees. We have the Special License Plates Committee, which is near and dear to us because of our Centennial Commission, but there's also topics such as education and public land. There are also non-legislative committees of interest, the Commission on Nuclear Projects, our own Councilwoman Tarkanian is a member of that, the Nevada Commission on Homeland Security, our Deputy Chief Scott Fuller is a member of that, the Southern Nevada Enterprise Community Board, our own Councilman Barlow, and many departments have been involved in that committee. Wanted to talk about some of the other things that we've been involved in during the interim other than the committees that we monitor. As you know, we do quarterly legislative outreach sessions. We're going to have one next week. This is to invite the legislators in, let them know what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're doing, so that they're informed when they go to Carson City. We provide monthly updates to our internal staff on the legislative committees and how it may affect them. We've been engaged, of course, in the Nevada League of Cities with Councilman Ross and Councilman Barlow and their legislative agendas. We have a unique partnership with the Clark County School District, with our education initiative, our RDA funding for education. We're working on an MOU there. That's in accordance with Senate Bill 92. And of course, you recall our support of the school district's capital projects ballot question that we approved via a resolution. In addition to that, and these are some of the things that... In addition to that, and these are some of the things that Betsy talked about earlier, Karen Duddleston has been very involved in the streamlining of the business license process from Senate Bill 110 from last session. Betsy and Scott Adams have been very involved in the statewide economic development plan that was required through Assembly Bill 449. And Kathy Rainey has been involved in the bidder's preference and new reporting requirements of Assembly Bill 144 from last session. In addition to these things, we've been working with all the other local governments, the lobbyists, the chambers of commerce, and other groups that have common legislative issues in preparation for the session.
What is the bidder's preference, please?
Last session, there was a bill passed that added some new requirements for bidder's preference and new reporting. We're happy to report that the city is almost 100% using in-state businesses on our public works projects, and we're using people from this community and from this state. We provided a report to Assemblywoman Smith, oh, I think it was about three months ago, just to show how well we've been doing it, asked for an update from us, and so things are going very well in that regard. Some of the upcoming legislative issues, you know, these are issues that are common, you know, every time I come before you, but bidder's preference, the consolidated tax, economic and redevelopment, education funding, more COPs funding, revenue and service diversions, these are all things that we're looking at very closely, and we're going to be prepared for prior to the session.
Question on the open meeting law. Is that debatable, anything?
Well, everything is open for debate at the legislature. So there is a bill that we're aware of that could potentially require the legislature to be under the provisions of the open meeting law. And there are always multiple bills that relate to that topic.
That must be very popular up there.
Time will tell.
Mr. Olivas, could you explain what a pocket veto or a drawer veto is in Carson City?
It's something that would happen if something like that was passed. Or introduced, as the case may be. That's correct. As I mentioned before, the city can submit up to three bill draft requests. That said, this doesn't hinder our ability to work with legislators on topics that you may find of interest between now and the session. So what we're talking about here is our legislative package. Please don't feel that your hands are tied if things come up and you bring concerns to me, because there are potentially other avenues. Our first proposal relates to Bill Art and his department, Economic and Urban Development. This is in NRS 279. This was, many of these, or portions of this bill that we're proposing were included in Senate Bill 360 from last session. We reported that that bill was vetoed by the governor for reasons beyond our control. We're going to go back and give this one a shot. It extends our redevelopment agency by 15 years. It allows us the ability to do loans, and we have some, what we think are good transparency process improvements, things that are good for the public, good public policy, adding a Citizens Advisory Committee, public purpose reporting requirements.
Excuse me, Councilman Coffin has a comment?
I need to interrupt you there, Ted, because that was the biggest bill the city had, the redevelopment bill, and it failed. And I don't believe it was, it failed by any fault of their team. But I think when you say reasons, how did you explain it? What was your euphemism for politics? What did you say?
Beyond our control.
Reasons beyond our control. Could you, without alienating any specific legislators, you know, today, because we can always alienate them later, would you tell us exactly how that happened?
Well, sometimes there are bills that are passed late in the session, and there are a number of initiatives that they try to put onto a bill. Some are good, some are not so good, depending on your perspective. And unfortunately, there were some things that were added to this bill that the governor didn't feel were appropriate for this state. Those things happen in the waning moments of the legislature, and unfortunately, that was one of those bills.
You're saying that people loaded it up like a Christmas tree. Who loaded it up and with what?
I don't remember all of the specifics of...
Well, you could say a powerful legislator did what?
Well, there were legis, there were a number of provisions in the bill that relate, well, a number of different topics.
Don't kill the messenger, Councilman, please.
Lifeline, lifeline.
Please throw this...
No, you know, Your Honor, the public doesn't know how it works if we don't speak frankly, though. Your Honor, I'm sorry, you know, you can't hide these things. We've got to...
And keep in mind, the governor was new.
Maybe I could weigh in, Mayor, if that's all right.
The governor may not have had any choice, but I think, you know, if he felt that the bill ultimately had turned into a Christmas tree. But I think the public needs to know how important redevelopment is and how we, you know, some people play games with this stuff based upon their personalities. And, but local politics is involved with this, because, you know, somebody wants us to do a favor, help them on a thing with their city, having nothing to do with the legislation. And if we didn't do something to help that other legislator, we, shame on us, but if we did all we could, let's say on the issues that they were concerned about, then shame on them. My point is that we can't have another session go by without that passing, and we need to know what the price is. You know, what does that legislator want? What can we do for him to help him out? Maybe there's some practical politics.
Okay, Ms. Fretwell.
You know, not to try and cover the legislative report from the last session, but we all know that getting 63 people to agree on something is very difficult. And we had a legislator who indicated a willingness to introduce a bill through the committee. That happened. It didn't get out of that committee. We were left to try and salvage the pieces and parts of that initial bill through two other bills. Senator Horford assisted us with the bill that got vetoed, and Senator Hardy helped us with the bill that actually did get through, which did the bifurcation of the redevelopment set aside to 9 and 9 from housing to housing and education. There were some transparency components that got built into Senator Hardy's bill. Senator Horford's bill had a bunch of other stuff in it that was also replicated in a bill that had already passed the Assembly and the Senate and had been signed by the governor. When I talked to the governor's office about the veto, it was too late, but when I talked to them about it, it was those provisions of basically local hiring provisions and some other things that had already been addressed in another bill, or the issues that were of concern for the governor in that veto, and that's pretty clear in the veto letter. So this stuff happens, it happens fast and furiously, it happens at the end of the session. It's very contentious. The guy asking me down, asking me the questions down the way knows very well what I'm talking about. Sometimes things get through that people aren't happy with, sometimes they get through and people are ecstatic. It just happens. It's not an easy process, particularly at the end, when you're trying to grab bills that get close enough to your topic to get your issue addressed, and that's what we did. So I know that that maybe doesn't answer the question completely, but at the end of the day, we had support in both houses for our provisions of that bill. And we are working very hard with the leadership, both existing and potential new members, to express the real need for this extension, this 15-year extension on the original RDA area. It's vitally important for us to be able to keep the ball moving forward in downtown redevelopment, and we have been very successful. We have built 50% more value in the downtown area in the last 10 years. And that's with the reset. That's with the reset. So it is working, and it can work when you're really focused in on those key projects that are critical and can turn things around. Those are the messages that we're trying to get out to all the key players, including the governor's office, the governor's office on economic development, his chief of staff, the governor himself, and everyone else that we can talk to to explain how vital this bill is to the City of Las Vegas. We have been, this isn't the first time we tried it, but we have been trying to get this extension, knowing that our bond's value would be dropping off significantly without an extension. And, you know, we talked to any of these developers downtown, Forest City being one, there's no way that we can do a bond right now in the original area that helps them in any measurable way to get the next three blocks going without this bill passing. That's the bottom line. Our TIF is running out, and so we either renew that or we change our game plan, and time is of the essence. So I hope that helps kind of clarify what happened.
I've got to say one thing. I agree with her, first of all.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with our manager. I want to say this. The weakness that Clark County has here, and I'm speaking globally of all of cities in the county, is that the party caucuses grew in strength at the same time the county caucuses diminished in strength, so that the loyalty at the legislature now is to the leader and not the place they come from. And we need to try to help rebirth, if you will, or recreate the county caucuses as it was, because in those days, we could fight these out. That's how we got fair share in the 80s and 90s after the 1981 tax shaft. We were able to reverse a lot of the flow of the dollars to northern Nevada, but it's because we had a county caucus in those days. And it wasn't to bless Clark County, but it was to bless all the municipalities in the city, in the county as well as the county. And we got a lot done. I know Betsy will remember that when she came in, we were still county, the county caucuses. This one was pretty strong. But since the days when we had to start raising a bunch of money for these campaigns, and they got so expensive, you really, you really had to kind of give loyalty to somebody or an organization in your party, and that's where local government has really been hurt. And so I just say that, you know, whatever we can do to help recreate loyalty to the county that you come from and the city in which you're representing, it'll help us, I really do, and it'll help all the cities in the county, and it will particularly help us on legislation like that, because you really ought to persuade four people, you know, your two party leaders, if you will, in each house, plus the governor. That's where your power is. If we can get them to go, if we can get that bill, if we can get them to just say to people, to their chairs and to their members, quit messing with the Las Vegas bill, it's important to the economy of the state.
Thank you.
I think that's the way, that's the song we have to sing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is that going to be standalone, the extend the sunset provision by 15 years, or is that going to be wrapped into something again?
Can you hear me? Can you hear, there we go. All of those provisions, let me get back to it here, will be in one bill, okay? So everything you see on this slide, okay?
But with no, nothing else, just this?
Just this.
Thank you.
That is correct. Our second proposal is for our Planning Department, and we've been working with Flynn Fag on this. This relates to NRS 278, and what we want to do is reduce the number of master plan elements that are in statute from 19 to eight elements. Our research has indicated that states such as California, Florida, Oregon, they have between five and seven elements. We, for some reason, have 19. We believe that we can get the same quality master plan document while reducing the requirements for the development community and staff. This, of course, is in line with our initiative to be more business friendly. And what we're proposing, if you look at the elements on the left, those are the elements that are currently in statute, and we would consolidate them to the elements that are indicated there on the right. And finally, our third proposal is for our Building and Safety Department, Chris Knight and his crew. This relates to NRS 268. And, you know, at every council meeting, Chris Knight and Mike Bous stand before you, and they report on properties with nuisance conditions throughout the city. What this does is reduces the timeline by which properties with nuisance conditions can be leaned for civil penalties. So we want to be able to lean the property sooner. Right now, it's 12 months, and while we can lean the property for those expenses that have been incurred by us hiring a contractor, we can't impose and lean the property for our civil penalties. So that's what we're trying to do there. We have a lot of work to do to prepare for the session, and we're committed to doing so. Approval of these bill drafts requests that I've just discussed will kind of get that process started. We don't have much time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Before we go much further, can we just back up? You said that we can lean for certain reasons, we couldn't lean for civil penalties?
Right, right now...
But was that a year, or does that mean you can never lean for senior?
You have to wait for 12 months.
Okay, that was what I, that last sentence threw me a little, because it sounded as if you couldn't lean, but you can lean, but it takes 12 months, which of course is harmful to what we're trying to do.
Absolutely. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, please?
He did, but, I mean, not here specifically. Do you want that? Please. Then.
With your permission, Mayor, Mr. Olivas, would you introduce your lobbying team to the council and the member, and the members of the public for us, please?
Yes, we have LeAnn Lee, who's our legislative officer to my left there. We have, I don't know if my glasses are on, Bob Ostrowski, who's back there, is Mike Sullivan back there. Mike Sullivan was here. And then we're in the process of getting a third team member. What we do is we try to find someone from within the city that might be willing to come up to us, with us to Carson City, so we're working on that now.
Great, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to accept the report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to accept the report and approve the three bill draft requests by the City of Las Vegas.
Thank you. There is a question from Councilman Barlow, please.
What happened to Bowers? Is he not going up this year?
He is, he's not going with his, with his new responsibilities as the city engineer. They need him down here, and so we're going to be looking for a replacement for him. He did a great job for us, and we're very thankful to have him. And he's been, really good for us. He's stayed engaged in this process, so we're developing our team in this area, so we're going to find someone else, but he did a great job for us.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Oops, sorry, don't vote yet. Councilman Deers.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have asked this question before I stood for election. Council members don't have to go to Carson City, do they?
No, they don't.
Thank you.
Excuse me, your response was?
No, they don't.
They don't have to.
They don't have to.
But if, if they are called upon, it would be in the best interest of the city if they did. You're first up.
Yes, there's no requirement to be there, but certainly it bodes well for the city when we're collectively walking the halls of Carson City.
No, I am already serving on the Health District Board, I just want you to know that.
All right, there is a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you, Mr. Olivas. The motion carries. We'll move on to item number 39, and yes, it is 12:30, so we're moving a little more rapidly here. Discussion for possible action regarding an agreement with Home Depot, USA Inc. for permitting a kiosk pilot program located in home improvement retail stores. This is in all wards, and Mr. Knight.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Chris Knight, Director of Building and Safety. Since becoming your building official, I have loved this job a great deal. The problem is, is it ruined me. Every time, I used to enjoy going to Home Depot and looking around at all the stuff and, and all the things that were in there and the cool tools and stuff, and now when I go to Home Depot and I see somebody buying lumber or a water heater, my first thought is, did they get a permit? And I'm tempted to follow them home to see if they had a permit, and it's just been really hard. And Home Depot does a great job of working with their customers. They will install your water heater for you, they will do a number of things for you. The contractors that they use, they require those contractors to get permits. And about a year and a half... And about a year and a half ago, they approached the Southern Nevada building officials with a proposal that said, what if we were to partner with local municipalities and put kiosks in our stores where people could actually pay for their building permits while the building official's standing there wondering if they had one or not, and, and pay in our store, and then just schedule the inspections. And we thought that was a great idea. They were looking at multiple locations across the country where they had their stores to do a pilot program to see if such a proposal would work. They selected Southern Nevada. We competed nationally for that, and they selected Southern Nevada. And what you have before you today is the result of that work. We've been working, Clark County, Henderson, North Las Vegas, and Las Vegas, through the Southern Nevada building officials and everyone else, have been working collaboratively with Home Depot to create a pilot program for 90 days where they would put kiosks in their stores. If you went into any of the 12 locations in Southern Nevada to buy a water heater, buy a water softener, the county and them have some other minor things that we didn't include, you can actually pay for your building permit as you buy your water heater, and they will send the information to us, and we will issue the permit and schedule an inspection for you. This goes hand in hand with our announcement a few weeks ago about the seven-day-a-week inspection program where you can get your water heater inspected. Now, we're doing something to partner with a, with a local purveyor of water heaters to help make it easy to get the permit, and we've made it easier to get the inspection. And hopefully, that will help with our, with concerns with having no permits for water heaters and no inspections. And I, we think this is a great thing. It's a 90-day trial. At the end, we'll decide this. What comes out of this program, I believe Home Depot is hoping to have a nationwide program. So we, once again, through the Southern Nevada building officials, the city of Las Vegas, and our participation, are, are leaders in the nation in doing something creative with our private sector partners.
Very exciting, and I gather your recommendation is supportive of this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, questions for Mr. Knight, anybody? You'll have 90 days. If it passes, you don't have to worry. Shop till you drop.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a thought?
I do have a thought, with your permission, Mayor. Mr. Knight, 90-day pilot program, can you make sure we put in there some revenue projections, or I guess you could just do permits pulled, would be sufficient enough for us to have an idea of how successful this is? And I think you won't have to follow anybody home now from Home Depot.
No.
To see if they pulled a permit or not, but what a great idea. I think the city of Las Vegas, again, as innovative as possible, partnering with the private sector, private sector partnering with local government to make it easier to do business in. So, I'm not going to make that motion, Mayor. Then with that, Your Honor, I would make a motion to approve of Gen. item 39.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. He's feeding him, that's why. Motion carries, great idea. Leadership, okay. I was here to answer if that was our position. Okay, now, let's see, we are on to, is that correct? We are on to item number 40. We're sent discussion for possible action regarding a changed ownership, of ownership for a tavern license from Jillian's Management Company, Inc. to Diet Center LLC, DBA, Heart Attack Grill, 450 Fremont Street, Suite 130. Councilman Barlow, this is in your ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, and I believe I need to rescind this item, is that the process? I would like to rescind this item before the council to open it up for further dialogue and also move forward with a, an additional recommendation in relation to this particular item. That would be my motion at this time.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote.
The motion on the floor, though, is just to rescind.
Motion to rescind. Please vote and please post. That carries, thank you very much. Rehear, discussion for possible action regarding a change of ownership for a tavern license from Jillian's Management Company, Inc. to Diet Center LLC, DBA, Heart Attack Grill, 450 Fremont Street, Suite 130. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and thank all of the staff involved as far as the city of Las Vegas, the Metropolitan Police Department, and also the applicant here on this item. After a lot of evaluation and looking back through this item as it relates to the concerns of suitability, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the mayor and council, is to move forward with the recommendation that was brought before us originally, which were the four conditions that was brought forward by staff. One, a review of the license before the city council in one year, or, or at the recommendation of the director due to violation of conditions or violation of the criminal or business license codes. One additional key employee who serves in a management position at the Heart Attack Grill and is found suitable by the director. The application must be made within 90 days of the date of the license, and in addition to that, I would require that the key employee be named within the next 14 days if, in fact, this item is moved forward. And third, Diet Center LLC to perform one semi-annual review with business license, and two, management oversight review of compliance quarterly with onsite key employees of the Heart Attack Grill. And four, report all arrests to Metro Call for Service within 48 hours of business licensing. Now, I do know, after speaking to the representative, the council for the Heart Attack Grill, that they had some concern as it relates to number four, as far as reporting outside of the Heart Attack Grill, as far as on the Fremont Street. They wanted to make sure that it was, the reports would be for all reports on the interior, and I agree with them, so that would be my condition, that it would be everything internally as it relates to item condition number four in this. Now, having said that, I would also, at this point, like to direct staff, Betsy.
Could I interrupt for one second on those four?
Yes.
Just for a point of clarification. Are those, in fact, the same four that was in the original report?
Yes, Your Honor, and our intent on number four was always to have that be just within the business premises.
Okay, thank you.
That was our intent.
Thank you.
That makes it much clearer.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow, sorry.
And what I, what I would like to do, and I would like to direct Betsy, as well as Karen, and legal staff, and whomever else, Betsy, you deem necessary, to bring forward to this council sometime in September, but no later than October, an agenda item for discussion to discuss the policy as to how, in fact, we should handle the criminal background as well as the financial background, for that to be policy discussion for the mayor and council to make a decision moving forward. I believe that that was the original intent of, of my position the last time this item came before us, and therefore, I don't want to hold this item in the midst of those policy discussions, because it's a bigger conversation than the applicant before, so the application, I should say, before us. So, I would like for this council to have a discussion as to whether or not it is suitable for us to keep the financial checks internally, or continue to work hand in hand with Metro as we've been, as, as we've done in the past. But we need to have that conversation, because I believe what has occurred is that we see some possible loopholes or, or some areas of concern that, number one, concerns me, Mayor, as it relates to individuals being able to come in the back door, as far as I'm concerned, and basically slipping money into businesses inappropriately. And I know that that's a concern for Metro as well, but it's a separate issue than the application before us. So, I'm going to move forward with placing a motion, and then we'll basically, Mayor, should you like, you know, have further discussion moving forward, but I would like to make a motion before we move into further discussion, and that motion would be the conditions that I stated on the record as of, what, I'm sorry, as the conditions I read into the record, to include the direction, Betsy, to bring the item back in September, but no later than October, to the council for discussion. And that would be my motion, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to say that that motion, just so we have it on the record, those four items were the ones that were confirmed by Ms. Duddleston as the issues that were before us originally. Thank you, and question.
If I can, Your Honor, I just want to make this.
Please, Mr. Gerbert.
I want to make it very clear for the record that the motion would be to approve the license subject to those four conditions. You are not voting on anything coming before the council on September 15th, or anything regarding the policy. We're not agending for that right now, but staff has that as separate direction individually from Councilman Barlow to do.
Thank you for the reiteration. And any other comment before we vote? There is a motion, please vote. That motion carries, and the request remains then. Ms. Fretwell, if you will gather everyone that needs to be involved in this conversation to get this policy procedure together, and thank you very much. Thank you for your work, your help on this. And we will now move on to, item number 41's been abayed till August 15th. And we move on to item number 43, discussion for possible action regarding an appeal of a work card denial for Ashley Nicole Hicks, DB at Funnies, 4747 North Rancho. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Ms. Duddleston, please.
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Ms. Hicks has applied for a work card to be a server at Funnies on North Rancho Drive. Her potential employer has provided a letter of support. Business License has reviewed the report from Metro and notes that any of the issues in that report occurred in 2005 or prior, and there's been no incidents since that time, and we would recommend a one-year work card site-specific with a one-year administrative review of, of that card, and then it would be released.
Sounds good to me. With your permission, Mayor. I would follow, like to, on a Gen. item 43, Ms. Hicks, you okay with all that, I would assume?
Yes.
Is your employer here?
They are not.
They're not, but they support you, and I'm going to.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for approval on a Gen. item 43, and thank you for sticking around as long as you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. We will move on to item number 44, discussion for possible action regarding an appeal of a work card denial for Robert Majdansky, DB at Cheyenne Saloon, 3103 North Rancho Drive. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Your Honor, for the record, again, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. This applicant has applied for a work card to be a bartender, where he would be handling both the serving of alcohol and credit cards at the Cheyenne Saloon. The report was provided in your confidential books. Under Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.861.0, the applicant has the right to appeal the denial of the work card and identifying any errors of law or fact that are in those, or any extenuating circumstances. From a business license upon review of that report, we did not find any extenuating circumstances or errors of fact, and support the decision of Metro to deny that work card at this time. But the applicant would like to speak and may have additional information for you.
Please, would you state your name also, please?
My name is Robert Majdansky. And, well, I have a letter here from Donald Holman. I don't know who do I give it to, or... I realize I made some mistakes in the past, and I'm trying to move forward. I am in a program right now. It's a part of, it's called Drug Court, which is, I get, I have a, I get urinalysis tested Tuesdays and Fridays. I go to group sessions with, to, you know, to talk about my, my drug addiction and trying to move forward with my, you know, trying to be a productive member of society. And I'm just asking for a chance to, you know, to prove myself that I can do this, and hopefully, I can, you know, better myself.
Question, if, if the applicant were interested in another position that does not handle money or cards or alcohol, what would be the consideration?
If, if he was in a position that did not handle alcohol, then he would not need a work card? And, and that is our concern.
Could you repeat that again for him? And that, in fact, then he would give, have a year or two to prove himself, and then could?
If he works in an establishment, has an alcohol license, and is going to be handling alcohol, then yes, he did, he needs a work card. If he's in an establishment that does not have a liquor license, he does not need a work card. Our concern is both for the handling and the serving of alcohol and the handling of credit cards, this close to the, the issues that are detailed in your report, and that he's still under supervision until 2015. That report is Metro's, and I would certainly let them go into details on that if that's what you would like.
So the key here is the alcohol in the establishment with that license. So any other type of establishment that didn't serve liquor, he could work. Please, Councilman Ross.
With your permission, Mayor. Mr. Majdansky?
Yes.
Is your employer supporting this?
He is, he is not currently here. I have a letter. He is, he's in medical school right now, and he, when I would be there, he would be with me, working with me while he's there at the bar.
And I guess, Ms. Duddleston, the owner, the licensee, understands this young man's issues and, and understands that his license could also be in jeopardy?
I, I believe he, he does, and he, and the gentleman that's here did just pass me a letter from, from his employer.
Could you read that to us, please?
I would be glad to. "Dated July 31st, 2012, to the city council. My name is Donald Holman. I'm the owner of the Cheyenne Saloon. I am writing this letter to apologize for my absence from the proceedings. I am currently seeking a medical degree, and I'm finishing up a summer term, and I'm very close to finals. I would have made arrangements to be there if not for a misunderstanding on my part. I know Robert and his family, and know everything about his past. I am uncomfortable with Robert working at the saloon, or I am comfortable with Robert working at the saloon. I implore you, if there is a way to give Robert a work card, even a site-specific or a temporary one, please consider doing so. I will be glad to answer any questions via phone or in person when time permits. Thank you for your attention to this matter."
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for reading that letter. Mr. Majdansky, is that your father with you here today?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that tells me a lot, so thank you very much.
And I gather by that presence, you are very supportive? Could you come to the microphone and give us your name?
Sure. Tim Thurtle, 3013 North Rancho. He has to live with me, so I am very supportive in what he is doing. We're trying to teach Bobby to stand up for himself. We do believe that he's, one day at a time, turning his life around. Donald Holman did, we did talk with him, and he's sorry that he couldn't be here today, but we believe in what Bobby's trying to do. Please understand that he will be well-supervised only by Donald, but by the other bartenders. He'll also be under video surveillance, and, and he's just learning bartending. He wants to go to bartending school and, and make away for himself. We were told that it might be easier if he asked for maybe a 90-day period for him to prove himself. He has been in Drug Court for almost nine months. He's in total compliance, never missed, messed up or, or anything. We tried to get a letter from the Drug Court, we just couldn't get it in time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barlow, this is in your ward.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robert, for being here today. I'm very concerned about...
I'm very concerned about the location in which you're looking to work. Without going into detail as far as your extensive background history, I believe personally that this is not, and this is just my opinion, this is not the suitable location for you to be working with the concerns, number one, for Metro, and then the concerns of drugs and alcohol being very closely tied and related to the issues of your background. I can't support this item for the site-specific location that you have chosen to work. I understand your need to work. I understand the need or the letter in which your employer has written, of course, your father supporting you. It's more so, I personally don't believe that enough time has basically spanned for you to be in this location around the alcohol. And it just doesn't sit well with me. So I can't support the application before me as it relates to you receiving a work I can say this, if in fact, the, you're in Drug Court?
Yes.
If in fact, and I can meet you halfway, should you choose, and I don't know, who's your judge in Drug Court?
Judge Delaney, but I believe she's stepping down.
I'm sorry?
Judge Delaney is my judge.
Is that district or...
District, correct.
District court? Mayor, Council, I mean, I would be willing to obey this item and have the court send something to the council as far as their thought as it relates to this item. And if the court is okay, then I will ease my position. But as of right now, I cannot support placing you in an environment that could jeopardize your ability to remain clean and sober because drugs and alcohol go hand in hand. And looking at your background, you're still fresh, and therefore, I personally and morally can't place you in a position to have you digress from the progress in which I know you're going to make. And so therefore, that's my position at this time, Mayor. I can't support it, but I am willing to obey it and see what the Drug Court has to say as it relates to this item. So I don't know, Mayor, how you want to move forward.
What is it? You go ahead and get something from the Drug Court master?
I could ask her about it.
And you might want to bring in some character witnesses since your last, we understand, you're three years on probation here. And so the fact that the councilman has offered you this opportunity, I know we'd all like to see you make it on your path, but this is a very good time to just really, you dig in here if you know inside yourself that you are going to stay clean for the rest of your life. This is the time to go back. And he has offered to obey this, which means puts it, put it off. What's the timeframe, Councilman?
I figured...
I go to court today.
You go to court today? So we can put it off, like, two weeks and see if the court would submit a letter to the council as far as their thoughts, and I would most highly take that into consideration and come back two weeks from now with a final decision. So I would recommend that we obey this item two weeks.
August 15th?
And you can have the court write the mayor and council a letter as far as their thoughts as to the suitability of the location in which you're looking to go to work.
Okay.
That's your motion.
I'm sorry? Yes, that is my motion.
And that would be August 15th, and I'd highly recommend in speaking with your father to, if there's anyone else that can attest to the fact that you are on a straight, narrow road. Because this, you are putting yourself in a very questionable job, and there are other jobs, I'm certain. But if this is the one your heart's on and what your future wants to be, now's the time to really step to the plate. So you've been granted, there's a motion now to obey this item till August 15th with the conditions that the councilman gave you?
Okay.
So if that works, anyone else comment?
Yes, and Mayor, let me just jump in real quick. Karen, if you can provide the gentleman, Robert, with our contact information for the court to appropriately address us, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, for Metro, does, is he on probation right now or parole? Yes, okay.
Sergeant Carmen Donigan with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Yes, he is. He's been on probation for approximately six months, and he has another two and a half years to go.
Does his probation officer know that he's made application for this position?
Our detective spoke with probation, and they said that liquor was not something that would, he was, that he could work in a liquor establishment, that that wouldn't violate the terms of his probation.
But he wasn't concerned otherwise? I mean, I'm just looking at the recent events, and it's challenging because this is, you know, we want to help this young man, and young man, I think you got that from what the mayor's comments are. It takes a lot of courage to say, "I'm going to go see the city council and appeal what Metropolitan Police Department said." Number one, you had some courage to stand here before us today. We see that, we recognize that, but we want to help you, but at the same time, we support our law enforcement officers and the agency that we go to to give us this kind of information. So, you know, I need to feel comfortable. I know Councilman Barlow does too, and your, Councilman Barlow's given you a great shot here to do something, but I'm not sure I still feel comfortable with that. But probation never gave you any indication as they were concerned about him working in a liquor establishment?
The detective only inquired as to the terms of his probation, whether or not it violated those terms. I do not believe that she was able to actually speak with the probation officer. She just inquired as to the terms.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I think it helps to ask a couple of questions now so that when information comes in, that would supplement what we have before that next meeting, I could understand Robert's case a little better. For sure, a lot of people your age commit crimes. You're not, frankly, an extraordinary person anymore this day and age. The use of drugs is not extraordinary. It happens an awful lot. And I need to ask you about the drugs, because the drugs, they take you to thievery, they take you to forgery, they take you to the other crimes that are committed in order to continue to live that lifestyle. What, you've used heroin, I understand, and, you know, we're going to hang it all out here, I guess. We do it in two weeks. You might as well. You have to do it in Drug Court. It's part of the recovery process anyway, frankly, is to let it all hang out. Are you...
If I might, Councilman, just as a sign of respect for this young man, we have the reports, the officers have the report. I would prefer you don't do that, please. And just ask, does he know? We can give him a copy to read, but I'm sure he knows his...
A part of Robert's recovery is to admit, to talk about this in any venue that he can find. It is part of the recovery process.
But I don't think in front of this public, this is necessary.
Well, let's just say this. Now, in your treatment, I hope that you have undertaken to take a substitute medication for heroin.
I kicked heroin cold turkey. I didn't take anything to help me through the withdrawals. I just did it all on my own.
Yeah, so no methadone, then?
Oh, nope. No methadone, no Suboxone, no nothing.
Because when heroin gets you, it gets you for a lifetime.
Yes, it can.
Yeah. Okay. Son, I'll listen to your stuff more in private, but I think that people don't understand the 12-step program. Need to understand that, frankly, the more you discuss it, the better it is.
Right.
All right?
Thank you, Councilman. I didn't mean to cut you off, and I know you're well-meaning in this, but we are behind you to get this done and do it in the right way. Councilman, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll go ahead and support the motion to wait two weeks to look at this, but, you know, I know you're trying to rehabilitate yourself, but there's some stuff in the investigative report, and this is why people have to be careful, what they post on Facebook, that doesn't give me a lot of reason to believe that you're rehabilitating yourself. So, you know, you do this kind of stuff, you post it on Facebook for everybody to look at, and it doesn't help you. And this is in 2012, this stuff is posted. So I don't know if I'm going to support you in two weeks, but these kind of things don't help you out. And it's a message to a lot of folks when they're using Facebook, they post stuff, things on there that are stupid, everybody gets to see it. So we'll see what happens in the next two weeks, but that's my comment.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, let's vote on this, to obey this item till August 15th. Please vote and post. Motion carries. And Councilman Barlow, you wanted to say something? Okay, please. Yes, please. Okay. So get all the letters in support. If, in fact, your proprietor, the gentleman that owns, can next time be here, anybody else that would like to speak to how great you're doing, that's what we want to hear. And as Mayor Protem said, stay off tweeting, no more Facebook unless you're positive, because this is your life. You're in charge of it, and we wish you the best.
All right, thank you.
See you on the 15th.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So now... Six, item 46. We're on to item 46, which I can't seem to find.
Mayor, that's Traffic and Parking Commission post, and that person was appointed when the mayor asked me to for Ward 1. And I would like to be able to nominate, not today, but at the next meeting, someone.
So you want to obey this?
Abey it, please.
Okay, there's a request by Councilwoman Tarkanian to obey item number 46 till August 15.
Right.
It's an appointment. That's a motion?
A motion.
Please vote to obey this item till August 15th. And please post. Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 47, Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 2012-30. Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have the bill read?
I do. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2012-30, in order to amend the supplemental document to the city's administrative code to increase the number of members of the Board of Appeals from eight to nine in private related matters.
Thank you. Would you care to make a motion?
Motion to approve item number 47.
Thank you. This motion, please vote. And please post. Number, item, bill number 2012-31. Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2012-31, in order to extend the benefits of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed to make it so that it happens to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and private related matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Motion to approve item number 48.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Bill Number, this is agenda item 49, Bill Number 2012-32. Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have the bill read?
Why not?
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2012-32, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to reduce the on-site parking requirements for the use taxi cab slash limo yard to provide further benefits.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Motion to approve item number 49.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. And items 50 through 57, bills number 2012 through, excuse me, 2012-26 through 2012-29, and 2012-2033 through 2012-37 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. So we will move on to new bills. And we are at now, item number 58. Items 58 through 61, bills 2012-38 through 2012-41 will be heard at the Recommending Committee on Tuesday, August 14th, 2012, and are assigned to councilpersons Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and we will move on to item number 60. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, read away, Councilman, I mean, counsel.
I will have to, Your Honor. Bill Number 2012-30, in order to amend ordinance number 3992, as amended by ordinance number 5520 relating to the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 707, Summer Line Area Authorizing the Execution Till Review of the Second Amendment to the Development and the Financing Agreement related thereto, ratifying action taken by city officers towards such amendment, and providing for other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2012-39, in order concerning City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 1514, Anne Road to Simmeron Road, west of Leggett Road, providing for the payment of the costs and expenses of set improvements, assessing a portion of the cost of set improvements against the accessible lots, tracts, and parcels of land benefited by set improvements, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, and providing details in connection therewith. Bill Number 2012-40, in order concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 1519, sidewalk infill, Okeebulbarde, west of Rancho Drive, and Alimut Street, north of Charleston Boulevard, providing for the payment of the cost of the expense of set improvements, assessing a portion of the cost of set improvements against the accessible lots, tracts, and parcels of land benefited by set improvements, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, and prescribing details in connection therewith. And finally, Bill 2012-41, in order to step to the city's licensing regulations pertaining to the privileged licenses generally and several licensing categories in particular, and to provide for other related matters.
Do we do this, can we do these collectively since you've read them?
They just need to be assigned to committee now, Your Honor.
Right. Okay, thank you. And now we will move on to item number 62. We are not going to go into closed session because we're going to keep everything moving forward. So now we will go on to...
Can we just move right along, Beverly, or you need to do something?
We can, but I need a five-minute break. We need to get the afternoon set up for you. We don't do that in the morning.
Okay. And we don't need to make a motion that we're not going to have a closed session. That just carries. Okay. So we will take a five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene for item 63. Thank you.
It depends on how fast we can get. Almost one boat.
We are waiting. We will reconvene in a moment because Councilman Coffin's gone to spend a penny. I gather nobody watched the Olympics this morning. I announced, Councilman Coffin, that you'd gone to spend a penny. That you had gone to spend a penny. That has a, a... That's a code word in Great Britain. Or group of code words. All right. We are back here. And now, I will tell you, yes. This is number sixty-three. Is that where we are? Okay. For possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff or applicant wished to be stricken table withdrawn or held in the bands to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon this time. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ninety, ROC four-five-one-three-five, applicant owner, Agullos Central Familiar Cristiano, on eleven point one-eight acres at five-three-five-five, Madre Mesa Drive. The applicant has asked that be obeyed till August fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, and that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. That motion carries. We move on to item sixty-four. Public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at seventeen oh eight Cedar Avenue, fees in the amount of two thousand sixteen dollars fifty cents, and assess a maximum of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in daily and failed inspection, civil penalties for a total of thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars fifty cents. Property owner, John Sunday. This is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Is the property owner present? If so, please come forward. And Mr. Bowes.
Mayor, members of the city council, the major cross streets to this property are Bruce and Mesquite. This property is not in foreclosure. This is one of those unfortunate cases where the property owner is deceased. We were able to contact two surviving sons and sent them copies of notice and order concerning nuisance conditions on the property. There was no response to the, the notice and order. So, the city was required to complete abatement work on the property, which we did on June twenty-second. The abatement work consisted of removal of all high vegetation, refuge, waste, dead vegetation from all areas of the yard, and a boarding of all windows and doors. The city's out-of-pocket expenses for that work is two thousand sixteen dollars and fifty cents. The total accrued civil penalties are twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. The property is valued on Zillow as of July twelfth of this year at thirty-four thousand dollars, and staff requests that the expense report be approved and the city council authorize a filing of a lien against the property to recover those costs and civil penalties.
Thank you, Mr. Bowes. Mr. Coffin?
Your Honor, thank you, Your Honor. The, I understand the heir, the owner's deceased and the heirs are not responding at this point?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think that, right now, at this stage of the game, I think probably we ought to, we ought to assess. I'm going to move that we assess the maximum daily fees for administrative fines as well as the hard costs, for a total of thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents, and then we will, we will see when they come in for a waiver. Somebody will show up after this happens.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I did not mention that a second time. Anybody wishes to be heard on this? Okay. There is a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. We move on to sixty-five. Public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at four fifteen Jackson Avenue for fees in the amount of eighteen hundred fifty-two dollars twenty-five cents, and assess a maximum of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in daily and failed inspection civil penalties, for a total of thirty-one thousand one hundred and two dollars twenty-five cents. Property owner, Trustee Clark County Treasurer, care of Jackson Street Casino and Land Development, C.O.D.L.C.T.X.C.A.L., care of W. Pickett. Is anyone present representing that group? Please come forward. This is in Ward Five. Councilman Barlow, this is a public hearing, which I declare again, is open. And Mr. Bowes.
Mayor, members of the council, the major cross street to this property is Owens and H. This property is not in foreclosure. We initiated this case on October eleventh of two thousand and eleven, and due to nuisance conditions existing on the property, we issued a notice and order to the property owner on October twenty-seventh. When the property owner failed to comply with the notice and order, the city commenced the abatement work on May two of this year and completed it on May four. The abatement work consisted of the boarding of all windows and doors and the securing of some unsecured structure on the premises. The city's total of out-pocket expenses are one thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. The total late fees and civil penalties are twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of all costs, late fees, and penalties of thirty-one thousand one hundred and two dollars and twenty-five cents. The property is not listed as a Zillow value. However, we did note that the taxable value of the property is currently at forty-five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Staff respectfully requests the council approve the expense report and authorize a filing of a lien to recover all those costs and fines.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Please come forward, state your name.
And Mayor, while that's happening, can you show the pictures again? I'm looking for them in the backup, and I don't...
It's valued at forty-five thousand. They would love to see the pictures again, please.
Oh.
Backup a bit?
The, the corrective work that was done with the doors and the openings in the back were unsecured, and some windows and doors. Our contractor went in...
So, that's all you did?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you show us where you have pre-abatement, post-abatement?
It would look the same because the contractors secured the doors. It was just the doors were open. They were in a closed position when we got there. Oh, you can see there, pre-abatement. See how the doors cracked on the left-hand side?
Right.
Your picture, four-twenty-six, and then...
That's why.
They secured the door.
They, they didn't do anything but... Six, yeah.
Okay. Public comment. Hello? State your name, please. Turn on your microphone. And there are no trees here, so...
So, the property is, is owned right now by the, the tax lien by the county?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I guess the county would have to be the one that settled over the city, right? Whatever. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? I will close the public comment. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bowes, the same question, for point of clarification. The county owns the land?
What happens, Councilman Barlow, is when the taxes aren't paid, the county puts its name on the title of the property. That alerts everyone that there are taxes owing on the property. If the taxes aren't paid, then the county ultimately will put the property up for a tax sale.
Tax sale. And does the city ever go in and pick up parcels in any of these tax sales?
I don't have any information regard, I don't have the information to answer that question. I would have to defer to another city department, perhaps Neighborhood Services.
Okay. Then I'll follow up...
We'll get you that information, though.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I will go ahead and move forward with the staff's recommendation for approval of this item.
For full assessment?
For full assessment.
Okay. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number, agenda item sixty-six, also public hearing. Possible action to consider request for waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling four thousand ten dollars twenty-five cents in out-of-pocket costs, nineteen hundred fifty dollars in failed inspection civil penalties, and twenty-six thousand in daily civil penalties, for a total of thirty-one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars twenty-five cents, recorded against the property located at forty-seven twelve Dover Place. The property owner's Nevada State Bank. This is in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the property owner present? Please come forward and state your name, and we will hear first from Mr. Bowes.
Mayor, members of council, the main cross streets to this property are Decatur and Charleston. This case was opened in August eleventh, two thousand, August eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and was closed in February two thousand and twelve. As a result of non-compliance of the previous property owner, the city incurred costs for removal of refuge, waste, high grass and weeds, the removal of two dilapidated accessory structures from the rear yard, and in securing all open windows and doors. The city incurred out-of-pocket expenses of four thousand ten dollars and twenty-five cents in performance of that work, and accrued failed inspection of daily civil penalties are twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of all costs, late fees, and civil penalties of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. You approved the expense report and authorized a filing of a lien against the property at your March twenty-first, two thousand and twelve council meeting. The property is valued on Zillow as of July eleventh of this year at eighty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, and staff respectfully requests the city council deny the request for a waiver.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, if you'd introduce yourselves and how you're affiliated with the property, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. My name is Harry Henderleider. I'm senior vice president of Nevada State Bank Special Asset Group. With me is Pierre Martin, manager of the OEO Division of... With me is Pierre Martin, Manager of the OREO Division of the Special Asset Group for Nevada State Bank.
Thank you very much. Any comments about this property that you would care to make?
Well, yes, Your Honor. What we'd like to say is that actually, we've requested a waiver of the civil penalties, not the abatement costs. It says we're requesting waiver of the, of both. We, we are good corporate citizens, and we do not oppose the abatement or out-of-pocket expense of the city, but we do think there's some mitigating circumstances here that we'd like to share with you in our request for waiver.
Well, I will then turn this over to Councilwoman Tarkanian, and if you would like to go forward with this, please.
Yes, I'd like to hear what you want to say.
Thank you very much. Primarily on a basis of fairness and due process, we'd like to point out that we had no notice of the abatement issues. The bank did not know the property was vacant at the time we filed our notice of default, which triggers the foreclosure process on December 2nd. The ordinance, as you may know, went into effect about 12 days after we filed our NOD on December 14th, and we, we ultimately became owner. The property went to foreclosure sale on March 28th. We became record owner through the recording of the trustee's deed on April 9th. The bank was not aware that it was vacant at the time we filed our NOD. We have been very active in the process and trying to help the process with the ordinance. We believe it's important to be involved and be proactive with properties. That's why I hope you don't see us here very often requesting waivers. The bank's a longtime community partner with the city, and again, we agreed to pay the abatement expenses, the out-of-pocket expenses of about $4,460.15, but we truly seek abatement of the civil monetary penalties per diem of $27,950 for the reasons I just stated.
Councilman Ross, please, comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. You recognize the challenges we faced as the City of Las Vegas with this foreclosure nightmare. My compliments to you because I have spoken with your higher-ups in regards to the foreclosure registry program, the foreclosure crisis in general. And Councilwoman, I don't know what decision you're going to make, but I'm certainly going to support whatever motion you make. But Mayor and councilmembers, Nevada State Bank has been an incredible community partner and recognizes the challenges that we've gone through. And when I met with your bank representatives a long time ago, they expressed to me that Nevada State Bank primarily holds all the notes for their mortgages. I mean, you're not farming them out to third parties or lending institutions in third-world countries. They're yours. They're home. They're here. And I was told that when a property owner is in default or they're having a hard time making their payments, you guys work with them. And I wanted to make that public today because that means a great deal to me and certainly to this council in regards to how you do business here in Southern Nevada. And I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
But good luck with this, but I'm going to support the Councilwoman.
And I would like to ask, too, is this on the market to be sold?
It is.
Anybody interested in it?
Actually, it is currently, currently in escrow.
It is in escrow?
Yes.
And at what amount?
I believe it's about $64,000.
And the Zillow on it, Mr. Bowes?
Eighty-eight thousand. Eighty-eight thousand.
This is public hearing. Gentlemen, if you would take it one at a time, please, and announce your name, too.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Councilman Ross, I agree with everything you said about Nevada State Bank. They've been real good partners. But until it does change hands, will Nevada State Bank, will they maintain the property? Will they, will they water the trees, do the yard and that? Do they have a crew for that?
Okay, and excuse me one second, we have comments. No, you stay right there. You'll come next. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I have to ask a question of Nevada State Bank here. Harry, it's another property. I know you promised to keep these things up, but nine months ago, the council permitted Nevada State Bank to do some work over there on its vacant lot at the corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Carson, very close to your bank branch there. But nothing has been done. Been going on a long time, Harry. It doesn't look very good for our downtown. You agreed, the bank agreed, to, to finish and improve the appearance of that vacant lot. And so that got convoluted, but because somebody unintentionally, or a contractor messed up and started to make a parking lot out of it, which requires all kinds of Conformance to Code. What are you going to, you go find out why it isn't up to date, and I won't delay this, this particular item, but I want to see, you know, an answer as to why that isn't finished.
Absolutely, sir. I'd be very happy to follow up on that. That piece of property is in another group of the bank, but I will follow up on it because it wasn't foreclosed. I believe that was an old branch. Not your problem, sir.
Oh, no, you own the land.
We want to follow up. We want to follow up on it. I wasn't aware that there's a problem, but we will certainly follow up on it immediately today, sir.
No, that's owned by the bank, yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, continuing with public comment, please state your name.
Nevada State Bank has a very good reputation, you know, as a, as a banking firm in this state. And all, everything I've ever heard about them is, you know, they have a good track record. And he said it's in, in escrow now?
Yes, sir.
To be sold, so hey, what can you do? They're trying to get rid of it, and it's all cleaned up and ready to be sold. I'm sure you'll get your money whenever the deal's over. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes, originally, I was going to go for a larger figure that I'm going to make in my recommendation, and I had discussed with you the larger figure. But you know, because we have so many problems with homes underwater, the losing of homes, and because we have many banks and other entities, financial entities, who are not giving us the support that we need in trying to solve this problem, and as I checked into it, I also found that your reputation was excellent in that, I am going to go with what you're suggesting. My motion will be the hard cost, $4,010.25. However, I will also let you know Dover is one of the areas we're working very hard in developing a walkover community and improving that. It's in our, that was the one that's adjacent to our new RDA area. So we're there all the time, and if we find that it's not kept up while it's still under your possession, we'll come back and ask you to do that. So that would be my motion. Did you want to say anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Present the council's past practices. When you've granted these kind of reductions, you've opposed the condition that the reduced amount be paid within 30 days, or the full amount then becomes due. Staff would request you impose that similar condition.
Right. On the motion, then add that the amount should be paid in full within 30 days. Matt takes care of it.
The amount being $4,010.25.
Right.
Are you able to do that?
Right.
Great.
Okay, then that will be my motion, and thank you for your help in this and helping families in our city, and it's appreciated, and it's not overlooked.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so very much. Councilman Coffin, may I contact your office for more information about the other lot problem? Thank you, sir. We will do that.
Thank you, there's a motion. Thank you both. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. It's not up there, but I have a way to sneak and see. Motion carries. Thank you. Hope you sell it. Items 67 through 89 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Hearing none. I shall now read them. Oops, this is non-public hearing, correct? Okay, item number 67, EOT 45410. Applicant, Walgreen, co-owner, F. Quentin Brown, Sr., at Al, 6101 West Lake Mead Boulevard, in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Number 68, RQR 45110. Applicant, Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner, Iota White LLC, for existing signs located on property, the northeast corner of Smoke Ranch Road and Decatur Boulevard. This is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Wait, I am looking. Okay, 73 is all through Councilman Barlow. RQR 45111. Applicant, Lamar Central Outdoor, owner, Vegas Outdoor Advertising, Inc., 369 North 13th, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45113. Applicant, Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, TLC Properties, Inc., 650 East Bonanza Wood Road, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 4511122. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner, Simon Chelsea LV Dev LLC, 979 South Grand Central Avenue, Councilman Barlow, Ward Five. RQR 45125. Applicant, owner, Sun Investments LLC, 616 H Street, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45133. Applicant, 840-844 Rancho LLC, owner, CBS Outdoor, 840 North Rancho Drive, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45330. Applicant, CBS Outdoor, owner, Adeland LLC, 1201 South Jones Boulevard, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. RQR 45336. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, owner, MJW Third Living Trust, 2750 North Decatur Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45337. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner, BBB Operating Company, 601 North Main, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45360. Applicant, Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, ZNC Properties, 2350 North Rainbow Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR 45362. Applicant, Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, Elden Equity Fund, 17 LLC, 2401 North Rancho Drive, Councilman Barlow, Ward Five. RQR 45363. Applicant, Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, Foster Day Corporation, 2401 North Decatur Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Item 80, RQR 45374. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, owner, Richard Hart and John Mormon, 2151 North Rancho, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. RQR, this is 81, RQR 45461. Applicant, Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner, Shamram, Inc., 4401 North Rancho Drive, Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Number 82, RQR 45464. Applicant, owner, LAKV Decatur, Inc., 23 North Decatur Boulevard, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Number 83, RQR 4565. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, owner, Gene Levy, Family Trust, Nowland Levy Trust, 2921 West Sahara, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Number 84, RQR 45466. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner, Bartis Mary, 13 LLC, 3941 North Rancho Drive, Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Number 85, RQR 45467. Applicant, owner, Marshall Family Limited Partnership, 2330 Industrial Road, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Number 86, I have to swallow. RQR 45468. Applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, owner, Shoshone Cattle Land Development Company, 3200 Valley View Boulevard, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Number 87, RQR 45469. Applicant owner, MB Rio Nev Land LLC, regarding existing signs located adjacent the side of Rancho Drive, south of Coran Lane. This is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Number 88, RQR 45470. Applicant, CBS Outdoor, owner, Michelle Akiardi, an existing sign located adjacent to the west side of Rancho Drive, approximately 200 feet south of Alexander Road, Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Number 89, RQR 45471. Applicant, CBS Outdoor, owner, WMC Three Associates LLC, regarding a sign located in the property bounded by US 95I 15 and Grand Central Parkway, Councilman Barlow. This is in Ward Five. All items are recommended for approval by staff. Items 68 through 89 are public hearings, which I now declare open. Anyone wishing to be heard on these items, please come forward, state your name, make your comment.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On item number 68, Councilman Barlow, do, do those two poles or the two signs, do they meet the distance separation? Am I reading that right? It says two existing poles.
Which item?
Number 68?
68.
I just wondered why there's, it says there's two existing ones, and how they meet the, the distance separation.
If there are two, I'm pretty sure they are in compliance. They may more than likely fall under the grandfather of, of the distance separation. So no new poles, if that was your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
All I want to say, Mayor, is that I, I want to agree that, to accept all of them that, as you read, for approval.
Thank you.
All of them, okay?
Thank you.
On behalf of the public, I'm only doing it on behalf of the public and for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearings. Councilman Anthony, do you have a motion to accept items 67 through 89?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And those, that motion and those items pass, and item number 90 has been obeyed to August 15th. Correct, Ms. Clerk? And we will move on to 91. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatement. Thank you. And we will now move on to citizen participation. Number 92, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No subject may be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject's on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed to speak, may be limited. In fact, we will limit that to three minutes, and anyone who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come forward.
My name is Anthony Harley, 123 St. David. I'm only trying to bring up some old reminiscences, and one of them involved your husband when he first became the mayor, and the other one is when Jan first became the mayor, and then I only find people stealing all my pictures. I only got one picture of him as an old cowboy in California, along with a, a, a U.S. Congressman named Jim Bates. Is he showing the picture?
Not yet.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. Jim Bates was a, was a congressman from the state of California, and when this country started that thing about sexual harassment, and he was the first congressman to get involved in the.
Is that handsome cowboy on the left, you?
Yes, ma'am. He was a young guy. I don't even know that guy. Whatever.
Wow, movie star.
Okay, now, this is one concerning.
Sideways.
This is one concerning, when Jan Jones first became the mayor, and then her counsel was Frank Hawkins and Adam, Adamson, and, and, and the other guy named, where you had Bob Knoll, and the other guy named was, it was Higgins, whatever. And then, then you got the one where your husband, he became the mayor.
There's somebody very handsome in the upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, that handsome fellow, yeah. That, that, that's when he became the mayor. And then that was his counsel, but within 90 days after he became mayor, he had had Ward Five and Six. And so, whatever. That's all I want to do. I just want to say, it was a pleasure to start by to see you. I just do these things to keep the public that follows me kind of happy, so have a good day.
That's very nice. Thank you for the history. Anyone else wishing to come up and speak? Please say your name.
Yes, I'm tonight hold it. I talked to you guys earlier today. I actually do have some portraits myself. I don't know, they all have to be within this square right here in order to be seen?
I don't know who operates that. Maybe Ms. Fred Wall can tell. Oh, yeah, look. Oh, yeah, look. There you are.
Well, and I wasn't trying to be offensive by any means by asking those questions or being abrasive or a nuisance or what have you, but I was asking those questions only because I tend to find as I continue to do research and continue to educate myself, especially with the problems that I see within our city, it's completely different from what you guys may see as our problems. And what I mean by that is that I believe that it's very possible to have one incident that could be so catastrophic that stops the progress of a person. I use the illustration about Allen Iverson because that really hit home with me and this was what, I think several months ago when I said this to you guys, but I used him because I felt that his story really correlated with mine, knowing that he grew up in the inner city, which I did here within this state and in the city and knowing that he played basketball. I also play basketball, but then the flip-flop of that is that I decided to, you know, I didn't go on to, you know, reach my goal as far as professional basketball, but I was seeking after that when those police officers stopped me that day. And that progress has stopped me for two years now. Well, who knows where I could have been and knowing that these pictures that I show you right here, if you look down at the circle one, is the young man named Jason Duran Turnbull. This was the individual, this was in high school. We went to Cheyenne High School and within this picture, this young man, whatnot as somebody that I played basketball with, also went to sixth grade with, he was the individual that was found dead with his arms crossed and his legs crossed. They still haven't come up with a resolution, I guess you could say, on how he ended up in that position and they found a Bible next to him. They said that it was suicide, but there's nowhere possible that an individual like this could end up with his arms crossed and his legs crossed and a Bible next to him if he pulled the trigger to blow his head off. And all these people here, as you see right here, this is Lee Washington, a well-known pastor within our city who I used to go to his church or whatnot. This is my cousin Dion Benyon and this is my brother Jamal Holdip. These individuals, this guy is a leader in you guys' community of the Zulu killers. This individual right here is carrying the mantle in order to start those crews off within your city. This individual right here, my brother, was in the incident that compelled you guys as government officials to travel from North Las Vegas to Las Vegas, all the way to the border of Mexico that was on local TV and also California TV when he was the one who kidnapped his own godchild, if you will. This picture right here is Dion's mother, was this lady threatened me and said that she would have me, she would have me removed from the face of the earth just a couple of weeks ago. All these things and that picture down there shows me with three different clubs, McCabe, Jackigan and also Andre Agassi Boys and Girls Club. All these things tied up from 2005 until right now and why these incidents actually happened. The young lady that I used to be...
I'm sorry, I just, can you wrap this up because you're over the three minutes and what you would...
I'm sorry, madam.
What you're moving for.
In conclusion, what I'm trying to say is that it's very clear that when I asked you guys a question in the beginning was get to this point of me saying that there is organized crime that happens within the city. Do you guys believe that? Do you believe that it's organized crime that happens within your city?
There's crime here. I'm not sure how organized it is, but I think they're definitely, and I think the most important thing is to state your case and if you need some advice, I would certainly ask Chief Coyne to speak with you and to advise you as to if you have issues, how to have them best handled. But is there a bottom line to your presentation?
Yeah, it really is. It's like what I said earlier, whatnot, is that these things keep happening, you know, it's only certain people who get some...
Comes from, yes, and I would tell you it comes from education. There's a lot of work to do. We're all very concerned about crime, certainly our Metropolitan Police, our Marshals. Everyone is tremendously concerned about crime across the country and certainly we have crime here and we're on it all the time. But if there's some things that haven't been handled, I'm going to ask Chief Coyne if you wouldn't mind having a few words with him to help him on these.
I guess in conclusion, madam, is that not being disrespectful, but I wonder why you guys would even allow such crews to even unite when I remember in the eighties and the vivid nineties that you guys made sure that you guys shut down Bloods and Crips and different organizations.
I can assure you, everyone is working very hard and our chief here Coyne would be happy to tell you what's going on to help, but we are very aware and we are always working on this, there is no community in the world that their first priority, and that's redundant, but that their priority is not to have the safest community they can have. So I thank you for bringing it to our attention and if you will speak with Chief Coyne here.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Anyone else, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. On item number 36, Councilwoman Tarkanian, I agree with you on that, on those decimal meters that the city ought to buy one to find out the actual noise level, but there's a difference between the volume of the sound and that incessant barking of a dog because if you have a dog that barks for hours and hours, it gets to you a lot more than some big bang and then it's over. That's number one. Councilman Anthony, on the same item, on item number 36, a person, when they buy a house, the first thing you look at is zoning, zoning, zoning. And I agree with you that I believe that it ought to be in a special use permit so the neighbors, all the people that are going to be most affected by those, by the rental unit will be able to come before the council and have their say before it, before the special use permit is allowed. On number 37, the LED lights he was telling about, they save all the money, they are magnificent. Councilman Coffin got new lights in our neighborhood and they are great. They don't shine in your window. They're direct, they're down there. Put a lot more light out into the lights where you need it, not where you don't need it. One of the other problems with number 37 though, the trails are still closed at night and in the summertime, when it's 108 out there in the day, you do not want to be riding your bike in the day. You ride the bike at night, you put the lights on it, but they close the trails at seven o'clock or eight o'clock. I think it's eight o'clock, but that's not right. They should have those things open at night. The other thing is on those parks, they have the water features and that, there's no swings in the park anymore. At one time, I think that there was a liability feature or something, but I wish somebody would check on that and see if we can't get some insurance and get some swings in there because the schools don't have swings anymore either, but still, kids love to swing. When they showed the map up, they said that there were some BLM reservations or some... What is a BLM reservation?
Bureau of Land Management, Federal Land.
Why would they reserve pockets throughout the city? What reason would they have to do that other than to just need them over to the city? I don't, that I don't understand.
But it doesn't have to have a response.
The last thing, where do these beautiful flowers come from? Nobody...
Darcy.
Who?
Christie.
Really? They're nice. And to sum it up, we still don't have a clock in here. And the other thing is these two monitors here are not coordinated with the ones on the end and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the compliments for the flowers. I will not tell you the truth that they're artificial. Okay, anyone else wanting to be heard, wishing to be heard at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to item number 93 and that is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. I will start way down at my right, Councilman Beers. Any comments, questions, anything you would like to do?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a couple of things going on out in Ward 2. They're starting a new display at the Sahara West Library and the art gallery there, not photos or paintings, but sculptures and pottery. The many artists that work out of the Pottery West Studio, which I believe is located in Ward 4, but it might be 6, not positive, but we welcome those artists down to Ward 2 to display their rather remarkable work. I've actually been out to the studio and seen some of the stuff out there. It's pretty cool. And then this weekend, out at the Veterans Memorial Center or City Center out by, next to Palo Verde, there's going to be a family fair sponsored by Nevada Connections Academy, which is a tuition-free virtual online public school. And some students who need more flexibility than the classroom environment offers in the school district can utilize that to achieve their high school diploma. You want to learn more about that Saturday morning out at the city facility out next to Palo Verde. Finally, on August 9th, we'll have our back-to-school fair and movie in the park at Ansan Sister City Park by Johnson Middle School. We'll be showing the new movie from The Muppets, which is important. We were careful to insert this in the press release we sent out. Not one media outlet picked it up. This movie features Kermit's move from a four-string banjo, which historically he has been playing, to a actual five-string banjo, which is significant for us banjo players.
No, I know and you're a banjo player and we're waiting for a concert.
Meanwhile, we'll be doing a back-to-school fair with goodies for kids, free backpacks and school supplies for the first 500 students. Be 6:30 PM start time Thursday, August 9th. See you there.
Thank you very much. That's absolutely fascinating.
Thank you, Mayor. I found it, so.
We should hold you to the end because you always have your special announcement. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to remind everybody that August 7th, Tuesday evening, is the 29th Annual National Night Out Celebration. This is an annual event where different communities throughout Las Vegas can get together, different neighborhoods and talk amongst each other, talk about some of the crime, the problems in their particular neighborhood. Metro officers will be there, Las Vegas firefighters will be there. It's just a great way for communities to come together and, you know, really work together to make sure their neighborhoods are a great place to live. The National Nights Out are going to be actually all over the city of Las Vegas, so if you would like to find out where is one that you can attend that's in your particular neighborhood, you can contact the Ward 4 or the Las Vegas Ward Councilperson who represents that ward and they'll have that information or you can contact the LVMPD Area Command closest to your neighborhood to find out where a National Night Out is. And if you would like to put together your own National Night Out, there is a way to do that. You can contact your Area Command for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and they can give you information to help you put one together. But again, this is a great way to meet your neighbors, talk about some of the issues occurring in your neighborhood and again, there are some plans. You can put one together, contact the ward office or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Following what Councilman just said, they are having a National Night Out activities in the different wards and in Ward 1, our National Night Out activity is being hosted by our Ward 1 in the city and also by the Metropolitan Police Department. It will be held at Rex Bell Elementary School, which in the cafeteria and Rex Bell is located just a short distance behind Palace Station. We will have an emphasis on safety and back-to-school needs and activities. We'll be distributing backpacks and also school supplies, particularly we're hoping that the individuals who live in the Clark High School District, Cashman Junior High School, Rex Bell Elementary and Vegas Verdi's Elementary and Elaine Win Elementary will come to this because it's in their area. Remember it's beginning at, I have to find my time on here. It goes from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and as I said, we'll have refreshments, we'll have fun activities, we'll have an emphasis on safety and on back-to-school needs and we hope that a lot of people will be there. We're trying to make it really nice, metro and the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. My monthly Coffee with the Councilman is taking place on tomorrow at Starbucks, Rancho and Bonanza from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, so please, business owners and residents, come on out and speak to me at Coffee with the Councilman. Look forward to meeting with you. We have a great turnout every month and I believe that we'll have a great turnout on tomorrow, so please come on out. Also, my annual back-to-school fair, I will be distributing approximately 2,500 backpacks to needy children. The event will take place at the Doolittle Community Center on August 18th. Doors open at 9:00 AM while supplies last. Please come on out. I want to make sure that the students return back to the classroom with the appropriate necessities in order to be successful in the classroom and those backpacks are free. We will have the Southern Nevada Health District there giving out immunization shots, so please, parents, bring the shot records for your children and there will be also entertainment and other vendors there for your wraparound service needs for your children throughout the school year. Doolittle Community Center, August 18th, doors open at 9:00 AM. Also, there is a Senior Energy Assistant Expo taking place, being hosted by NV Energy on Saturday, August 11th at the Cashman Center located at 850 Las Vegas Boulevard on Saturday, August 11th and the doors open at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Senior Energy Assistance Expo. So if you are a senior and you need assistance with your energy or your energy needs for your home, please come on out Saturday, August 11th, starting at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And Doolittle Community Center, for those of you that have not frequented the Doolittle Community Center in the past, it's located at the corner of Lake Mead and J Street on August 18th, the back-to-school fair. And Thursday, tomorrow, will be the Coffee with the Councilman at 9:00 AM, Rancho and Bonanza. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd like to add, the Nevada Health Center services pediatric or children's medical services and obstetrics gynecology at the Nevada Health Center. Medicaid is taken and what is that location of the Nevada Health Center, this specific location?
The Nevada Health Center is located at the corner of Stella Lake Drive and Mount Mariah. The major intersection is Lake Mead and Martin Luther King and you can actually see the Health Center from Martin Luther King and Lake Mead, but it's on the corner of Mount Mariah and I just drew a blank. Stella Lake, Stella Lake. Thank you, Mayor.
Know that for pediatric care, children's medicine and obstetric gynecology. It's a great center and they are really, they're open and ready for customers and clients and patients. And so, closing this up, no, no, Councilman Coffin has left. He left, he had to go to an appointment. So Mayor, did we do, you're the end, right, Councilman Ross, because you always have the special announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm kind of special.
You're always special.
As you can tell, it's back-to-school time as many council members are having their back-to-school events and I am no different out in Ward 6. It is our back-to-school event at Centennial Hills Park Friday, August 3rd, that's this Friday, 6:30 to 9:30 and I say 9:30 because it's a double header. We will be playing the movie Muppets with the five-string banjo, Councilman Beers, in the Centennial Hills Amphitheater right after the, we give out a whole bunch of goodies to get kids started off right and I think Councilman Barlow hit it on the head in regards to getting kids started off right for the school year. We've got a lot of great vendors coming out there. The movie is being sponsored by Republic Services and we really appreciate that. Also, National Night Out, the Providence Master Homeowners Association... Also, uh, National Night Out, uh, the Providence Master Homeowners Association will be having their, uh, their National Night Out at Knickerbocker Park. Uh, and that event will start at six o'clock as well. My wife and I will be there and rumor has it, and a helicopter from Metro will be landing on the ball field. Now, for the more serious things, um, in our continued efforts to partner with Nevada Childseekers, we have another missing juvenile. His name is Anthony Salamon. He is sixteen years old. He's five foot eleven, hundred and forty pounds. He has brown eyes, brown hair or shaved head. Um, he does, uh, Anthony was last seen in the area of East Robindale Road and Paradise Road. It is unknown what Anthony was wearing last, but he may be carrying a black backpack with personal belongings. Anthony has severe acne, may be in the areas of Fremont Street. If any of you have any information, please contact Nevada Childseekers at four five eight seven zero zero nine or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at eight two eight three one one one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, any other comments? Thank you very much. Hearing no more commentary here. This meeting is adjourned. We will see you on August fifteenth.